But they wouldn't take no for an answer. And we think if we were allowed to conduct the discovery, it'll show that their plan was always to propose a retail center they had no intention of building and hire Mayor Palito's friend, Jill Wallace, to as a permit expediter to get the car wash they were not allowed to have. They obtained a general plan amendment and a zone change from the city when they should not have by misrepresenting what they were going to do. There would have been tremendous public opposition had they asked for the general plan amendment and zone change in connection with the car wash. In fact, the city told them not to even apply for it. So I think that it's the time has come for the city to do the right thing, to step up, get in front of this thing, get on the right side of history and take responsibility. The petitioners want to work with the city, be reasonable to the mutual benefit of the city and the petitioners. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's go ahead and start the meeting and I'll go ahead and call this regular meeting to order of the San Ana City Council for January 19th, 2021. Good evening, everybody. I hope everybody is well, hope everybody is safe. Just a couple of things before we get started. If you all know kind of the rules on these things, if you could please keep yourself muted unless you're called upon to speak. We are beginning with a new system that we've tried out a couple of times, but I know we're still a little bumpy. It's Prime Gov, but I like the new agenda format, so it looks great. Please bear with us, members of the public and colleagues and staff as we go through this and we'll get through this fine. It's a work in progress. So let me turn it over to the clerk so she can call roll, please.
Councilmember Basara?
Here.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Present.
Councilmember Lopez?
Present.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Present.
Councilmember Fan?
Here.
Mayor Proton Penylosa?
Present.
Mayor Sarmiento?
Here. Thank you. And just as a matter of interest for anybody who is waiting to speak on public hearing item number 27, that matter's been continued to the February 2nd meeting at the request of all parties. So before we proceed with the pledge and the invocation and the rest of our special matters, would you, Madam Clerk, would you go ahead and give some instructions here as we move forward?
Yes, to all the members of the public who would like to make comments at the beginning of the meeting, for all comments on agenda and non-agenda items except for public hearings, comments for public hearings will take place after the mayor opens the hearing. To request to speak, dial *9 from your phone or virtually raise your hand from Zoom. Please do not call Zoom or call or Zoom to only listen to the meeting. Meetings are broadcast live on Spectrum Channel 3 and AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99 or at YouTube, excuse me, youtube.com/SantaAnaLibrary. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you for that. Why don't we go ahead and today's kind of a special day and I'm feeling extra patriotic. We just had Martin Luther King, you know, weekend and we celebrated his legacy and his life. And tomorrow is the, you know, the inaugural day. So we're kind of sandwiched in between two very important momentous occasions. So why don't you all join me in the pledge of allegiance? If you're near a flag, please stand and put your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And we're going to have our invocation as well. And what we've been doing is trying to celebrate different faiths and, you know, in the city last week or excuse me, last meeting, we had an invocation that was done by an Imam from the Islamic Center of Orange County. And tonight, we're going to be led in an invocation prayer by one of our master rabbits from one of our Vietnamese Buddhist temples. So Juan Hugh, are you on the line? Can you hear me, sir?
Yes.
Please, the floor is yours. Please lead us in the invocation and thank you so much for joining us.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Today, I'm very happy to present here to cry for peace in the city. So in this moment, I would like to invite all of you to pay attention to the present moment and join with me with the praying. Namos Sakiyamoni Buddhaaya. Homage to Sakiyamoni Buddha, whose grace and compassion inspires. Because of your love for all people, please have compassion for our suffering. Our world has been in pandemic for too long, divided. It is a lens of tears. Please help us remember we are just one family. Have us rekindle our compassion and brotherhood and transform our separate interests into loving acceptance for all. May your compassion help us overcome our hatred. We are determined to cultivate only thoughts that increase trust and love, to use our hands to perform only this that builds community, to speak only words of harmony and death. May your teachings of pray compassion and loving kindness be the guide to our mayor, Vincenzo, and our council members of the city of Santa Ana and bless them with success in their noble, selfless and restful efforts to build this city of Santa Ana into one of pray prosperity and harmony. A welcoming city of love, peace and joy and equal justice under law for all resident brothers and sisters of this city. May you bless our mayor and council members, all the servants of the city and their families and keep them always safe, healthy and happy. Namos Sakiyamoni Buddhaaya. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for those beautiful words. I feel, I think you inspired all of us and I believe that's what this invocation is all about. So we appreciate that. And let's go ahead and move along to the ceremonial presentation section of the meeting and we'll begin with an oath of office administered to Mark McLaughlin as Ward 4 Representative on the Planning Commission. Great. Thank you for those videos. I know my audio was a little low, so I couldn't really hear much, but I think maybe those masks were on a little too tight. But I know Janelle and Mark McLaughlin will do a great job on planning and on ETAC respectively. So thank you both for your service. Let's move along to the second item, which is honoring the life and legacy of somebody that's very important to the city. Dave Ream was a former city manager here for 25 years and spent actually 33 years serving the city. And he passed away on the 26th of December of last year. And so we thought we'd, you know, we normally adjourn in people's memory at the tail end of the meeting, but because Dave spent most of his career here in San Ana serving our residents, we thought it might be more appropriate to do this here. And I want to thank, you know, Carl Benninger, who requested that this happened and a lot of others. And I know Senator Tom Umberg is here and maybe Senator, if you can join us for a couple of words after we see the video and I say a couple of words about Dave.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk. Go ahead and show the video.
Mayor, the only thing I've been issued is just a photo, so I can share that. I don't see that there's a video or anything to be shown at this time.
Got it. Let's go ahead and just, as you know, we also have been displaying Dave's photograph on the digital reader boards throughout the city. And we've been trying to honor his memory that way. So let me go ahead and just say a few words before I pass it along to Senator Umberg. So Dave Ream passed away on December 26th, 2020 in Laguna Hills at the age of 76. He had been battling Parkinson's disease for several years. He was born on July 1st, 1944 in Long Beach. And he was the son of a Long Beach police officer who was killed in the line of duty. Dave went to Poly High School in Long Beach and was very proud of his time at Arizona State University, where he received his degree, his undergraduate degree, and later a master's degree in business administration from Cal State Long Beach. He worked for the city of Long Beach in Lakewood until he arrived in San Ana in 1978, where he would serve for 33 years before retiring. But before then, he served in many roles here in the city, including Executive Director of Community Development and became the city manager in 1986 at the age of 41. He was very instrumental in bringing about a lot of development in the city. And one of those was the transformation of what was Fashion Square into Main Place Mall today. He had a, did a redevelopment partnership with San Ana Unified to build a dozen public schools, which he was really proud of because during his tenure, there was such a growth of student and the population had risen so much that there was a scarcity of sites, scarcity of schools for the student body. And Dave, I know, worked really closely with the school superintendent here in San Ana and the school board to realize a dozen new schools that the city was very helpful in making available. He also created the network of neighborhood associations, which we all enjoy today. He thought it was a really important way for us to communicate with one another in different areas of the city. And we know how invaluable it is now. He was vital in the construction of the new police headquarters, Bristol Street widening, the expansions both at Bowers and at the San Ana Zoo. He was also critical to the Ronald Reagan Federal Building and the courthouse in downtown. He also helped with the opening of the Discovery Science Center. And he was also vital in making sure that the downtown developed its artist village and the Fiesta Marketplace. Dave was a real family man. He, you know, saw that it was so, education was so important that one of the, you know, one of the labels that the city had was education first and San Ana 2000. So he was so vested in making sure that, you know, local government agencies, businesses and others worked together to prepare San Ana students for the modern workforce. He was on the board of the San Ana Boys and Girls Club. And he just felt that it was so important that we created a strong culture of customer service here at City Hall, that he worked directly with many of the managers and many of the staff to make sure that when people came to San Ana, they were treated well, they wanted to come back. And I think that culture is something that still remains as his legacy here in the city today. Dave is survived by his wife Diane and his three adult children and other family members. And, you know, just on a personal note, you know, when the news reached us of his passing and we were talking about, you know, his eulogy and how we honor his memory, you know, it's funny how quickly things change. But I was the only one left on the council and really in the organization at least that knew Dave personally. And Dave was such a fixture in an institution here in the city, let alone City Hall, that, you know, it's funny how things quickly change. But I think Dave left his, you know, fingerprints and his legacy on many of our lives on things that we're enjoying today. So, you know, we were very, very fortunate to have him serve most of his career here and we thank him for his service. And I know that Senator Umberg is on and I'm going to go ahead and give him the floor so he can speak a little bit about Dave because I know he knew him personally and it was a big loss to all of us. So Senator, you want to go ahead and take the floor, sir, and say a few words about Mr. Ream?
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, good, 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 good. Let me just digress for just a second. We have this existential threat right now, the COVID virus. And I wanted to commend the city of San Ana and leaders of the city of San Ana for stepping up in ways that other cities have not. This is a terrible scourge and I want to thank you personally for leading the way among cities, particularly in Orange County. Now let me turn to the matter at hand. I did know Dave Ream. I first met Dave Ream in 1989. And he was a mentor of sorts when I was first elected to the Assembly a few years ago, 1990. Dave was a person of great integrity. He could be tough, really tough. And that toughness was exhibited as you drive around the city of San Ana because he fought for things. You mentioned Mr. Mayor, you know, the Discovery Science Center, the number of schools, the, for example, widening of Bristol Street. Really, really a challenging project. And Dave was, and Diane were part of the fabric of Santa Ana and made a difference in so many lives. So it is appropriate that we take a moment and recognize the contribution that Dave and Diane made to the city of San Ana, that this place is so different and so much of it is attributable to Dave Ream and his tenacity and his vision. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for giving me an opportunity to say a few words about a person who deserves to be recognized.
Thank you, Senator. I know that, you know, Dave did, you know, touch the lives of so many. And I always, you know, one of the things I remember about Dave is that, you know, he could be talking to, you know, CEOs of large corporations and judges. And then he could talk to folks who were just, you know, residents and neighbors. And, you know, he never changed his tone. He was always very calm, really patient. And he had this really, you know, gentle demeanor. So, you know, that's what you have to have, I think, in the line of work that, you know, they do as city managers. But he will be missed. And I know Diane, we send all our, you know, all our heartfelt sincere condolences to her and the families. So thank you for those words, Senator. And we'll go ahead and get back to the meeting. And thank you for those words about the COVID. We'll be talking about an update soon and we'll keep your office updated as we, as we move along.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you all.
Thank you. The next item is the certificate of recognition that will be presented by Councilmember Mendoza to Medica Testing Group for their outstanding contributions to the community. Councilmember Mendoza, I'll go ahead and turn over the floor to you, please.
Thank you, Mayor Sarmiento. It's my honor to award this certificate of appreciation and recognition. Medica Testing Group, which is operated by Director Fred Flores, successfully provided COVID-19 testing to over 35,000 of our Santa Ana residents in the months of September through December 2020. The tests in Santa Ana were administered at various locations throughout the city of Santa Ana, including parks, community centers, schools, neighborhoods and the super site at the Santa Ana College, where as many as 1,000 individuals were tested daily during the last two weeks of the testing period. Medicas worked directly with the Santa Ana College Nursing Program to offer the RN students' work experience that translated into hours needed to fulfill graduation requirements. Medica generously supported the city's annual toy drive with a donation of $15,000 to purchase toys and other gifts for the youth of Santa Ana. Medica proudly employed many Santa Ana residents to assist in all phases of the service they provided. To date, Medica Testing Group has administered COVID-19 testing to over 500,000 residents of Southern California. On behalf of the city of Santa Ana, the city council, Medica's staff, Director Fred Flores and the late Ray Virches, who succumbed to an earlier, early death earlier this month due to COVID, they are publicly and proudly recognized as fierce frontline essential workers who risk their lives daily to protect Santa Ana residents. Their service to the community was critical in helping us get through this difficult time and they deserve our applause, our thanks and our respect. Thank you, Medica Testing Group.
Thank you for that, Councilwoman. We certainly do. They did a lot of heavy lifting here. We certainly appreciate their service to the city and to the residents. Moving along to the next item, which is an update, the COVID-19 update to the community and I'll turn it over to Madam City Manager for that.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Proton and councilmembers. For tonight's update, I want to provide you information regarding our testing and vaccination efforts. And then I do have some final numbers for the accomplishments we achieved with the CARES funding, since that funding has now been closed out and all of our reporting requirements have been fulfilled. So on the vaccination front, Santa Ana was very fortunate to be selected as a pilot site to do 500 vaccinations to those senior citizens in our community aged 65 and older. We handled the pre-registration and all of the appointments and we are at capacity. We have all 500 slots that are taken. The vaccinations will be done tomorrow beginning at 9:00 and should run until about 3:00 o'clock. There are not walk-ins allowed. So if you're not one of those that has secured an appointment, unfortunately, if you show up, we won't be able to assist you. But I do hope that working with the county will be able to maybe proceed and do more of these in the future. The vaccination that they are using is the Moderna vaccination. That is what has been provided to us by the county of Orange. In regards to testing, I know at the last special meeting, you did authorize up to $750,000 for the purpose of testing and for vaccination. We're certainly using a little bit of those funds to help do the logistics for our vaccination site tomorrow. And with a lot of that, we are in the process of finalizing a contract with 360 Clinic for testing in our community. We have allotted $500,000 to 360 Clinic. And with the way that we have structured it, meaning that 360 Clinic will attempt to bill third parties before they bill us for those testings, we believe that we could do upward of 50,000 tests with that $500,000. So we're working out just the details on that and hopefully we'll have those started up very, very soon. We do also have already in the city, testing that is happening, all the hard work that Latino Health Access is doing. They will have testing that's available on this Thursday, January 21st, and that will be from 9:30 a.m. to 4:30 at Saddleback High School on Flower Street. Now moving to some of the Santa Ana CARES final numbers. For the childcare program that you had requested and we rolled out, we were able to fund 221 applications. For the artist grants under your leadership, we also awarded 103 applications for that. For the isolation assistance, this is for those that needed to be isolated from family members with COVID. We had 203 participants, which served 81 households. Business grants, we issued 394 business grants. And for restaurant and bar relief, we issued 89 grants. For a museum stabilization grant, we issued three museum grants. On the small business incentive micro enterprise grant, we issued 96 grants. And for utility assistance, we helped 1,857 residents. And for landlords, we spent $1.1 million that assisted 323 households remain within their residences without having any worries over backdoor rent. We also, for tenants, we provided assistance directly to the tenants in addition to the landlord program. And we helped out 887 families for COVID tests, as mentioned by Councilmember Mendoza. Through the contracted efforts of Medica, we did perform 35,455 tests at 201 different testing locations throughout our city. The COVID hotline that we put in place, we received almost 8,000 phone calls where we were able to assist, speaking in both Vietnamese, Spanish and English. And the types of calls that we did get on there, the vast majority of them was for the rental assistance and the utility assistance, with the third most popular nature of a call was on COVID testing. So that is my report for tonight. Certainly, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Madam City Manager. Excellent report. Let me bring it back to the council. If any of the council members have any questions or comments, colleagues? Hearing none. Madam Clerk, you can alert me if I'm missing anybody. But I don't see any virtual hands raised or any physical hands raised and I hear none either. But I did have a couple of comments. So very exciting news about, you know, at least this pilot program for the vaccinations that will be done tomorrow. So I'm hoping that that gives us at least some inroads in working with our partners at the county, letting them know that we have the capacity and the ability to do this. So hopefully things go well on that. And that's great that we're able to bring some resources to our, to our residents. On the, on the testing front, because we know, one of the things I'm hearing from the federal government and our partners there is that everybody has a scarcity of vaccines. So what everybody expected to receive hasn't been achieved. So there is certainly a shortage and a scarcity of the vaccines and they're slow to roll out. We're hoping as a new administration comes in, that will start flowing quicker. But it's going to take weeks, if not more, especially as we get past some of the first phases of high priority folks who need to get vaccinated. So we know that that's going to be something that's coming. I just had a question for you, Madam City Manager. Do you have any sense, now that we're looking and working with the vendor, any idea when something might be physically ready to go ahead and start, start the testing?
I'm sorry, sir. I do not have an exact start date. We are just putting the finalized, finalizing the touches on the actual agreement with them. And it was just today that we were able to determine the amount that they would need to run through their model to achieve. But I certainly, at the second that I know any of the firm logistics, I will send council an email.
Great. And then we can start talking about outreach and maybe pushing that information out to people because it'll take a while to make sure we message it correctly, whether it's going to be a fixed site or whether it's going to be something that we take to neighborhoods as we did with the CARES Act, or maybe both, right?
Absolutely. We will definitely be ready to go once we have all the details.
Great. Last thing was, and I know the Senator was on here and I had been in contact with his office about some things that, you know, I think I've heard from council members and members of the public where you where you still have some businesses and, you know, unfortunately, some, you know, residents that are still defying a lot of these, you know, executive orders from the governor and gathering in large numbers. So I know that we don't want to be punitive with anybody, with any business. We know that things are very difficult, but nonetheless, these are lives that are being compromised when, you know, rules are being defied and they're not being followed. So in a way, maybe there's something that we can work with, you know, work with either police or code enforcement, where we have letters that are issued to businesses that are non-compliant. And maybe the letters basically say, "Look, to the extent that you continue to defy, you know, you may not be eligible for any business grants in the future." You know, and really try to reward those businesses and assist them, assist those businesses that have been good actors, right? That have been trying to be compliant and not stay open, you know, when they, when they're not supposed to, and maybe, you know, keep things at a limited capacity. But maybe even a step further. You know, as we have a role in, you know, issuing, helping state agencies like ABC renew applications and licenses, they always ask our police department to issue sort of a comment letter. You know, have there been elevated calls for service? You know, have things been going smoothly? And then the renewal is based upon those comment letters. I think, you know, it's appropriate that if we see businesses that have been, you know, defying consistently, maybe that's like, you know, look, maybe it's a bad mark. Maybe it's a bad letter saying, you know, "These folks really haven't been doing a good job in being good actors and being responsible business owners in the community." But I think that's maybe what a letter should say to some of these business owners, that they could compromise their licenses and their permits. We just have to make sure people, you know, stop behaving, you know, improperly and defying these orders. These are real lives that are at stake. Today, seeing, you know, the number 400, you know, 1,000 lives that were lost and, you know, you know, the impact that we've had in our city. I just think we can't stand passively by. And I don't blame a lot of our business owners. They're hearing mixed messages from many people at different levels, whether it's the county, whether it's, you know, even, you know, you know, in the White House. So hopefully, that messaging will change. But nonetheless, we have to remind them that, you know, we want to reward good behavior and not punish bad behavior. So that's basically my comment, and thank you for that report. Please keep us posted on the new site. So let me go ahead and move on to the next item and next section, which is the public comment period. And this is a time and place for the members of the public to address members of the City Council. On agendized and non-agendized items, you will have three minutes to speak. And I believe that the clerk had the line open for people to get in the queue, starting at 5:00. So I'll go ahead and turn it over to the clerk, so she can go ahead and call on anybody who'd like to address us from the public or submit anything in writing as well. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, did you want to start with maybe having the city attorney report out anything on closed session before?
Sorry about that. I skipped over her. Madam City Attorney, is there anything to report out from closed session?
Mayor, there's no reportable action from tonight's closed session meeting.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. For any member of the public, if you'd like to make a comment during the meeting on agenda, non-agenda items, with the exception of public hearing items, please dial *9 now or virtually raise your hand through Zoom. Please wait to speak on public hearing items. Those lines will be reopened at the time the item is being heard. Please do not call just to listen to the meeting. To only listen, you may go to youtube.com/SantaAnaLibrary or Spectrum Channel 3 or AT&amp;T U-verse Channel 99. If callers are watching this meeting on TV or online, please mute that device or speaker before making your comment in order to prevent audio feedback. And again, callers, if you're wanting to speak on any non-agenda item or agenda item listed, with the exception of public hearing, item 28, since item 27 will be continued to the next council meeting, please virtually raise your hand by dialing *9 or selecting the virtual raise hand on the Zoom application. Zoom ID Maniascamia, you have been unmuted. Please proceed with your comment.
Sure. Hello, everyone. Thank you. Welcome to 2021 and this democratic experiment at a very historic moment in our nation's history. You know, really wish you all the best of luck in this new year. Just wanted to talk, I guess, about three items, starting off with item number 24. So I really do like the, you know, idea of finding out a little bit more about the way our property taxes are structured in the city. I just felt that there was a missing opportunity in this particular item to have more analysis done on potential properties that are either generating a lot of revenue kind of on a per acre or per square foot basis, as well as potential properties that are underperforming relative to similar properties. So I know a lot of the analysis that's being conducted is going to help with the budget forecasting. But I think that that might be an opportunity to see if that's something that we could work with this particular vendor to figure out ways that we can raise property values and our property tax revenue in a kind of more comprehensive way, especially if we have all of these land use considerations that are coming in with the general plan update. So that's for item 24. Item 30, I really do look forward to getting this passed. I think you guys are all going to be in support of this, but having all Santa Ana residents available to serve. I know that Carlos over on the Measure X Committee has been doing a wonderful job, and I think it just goes to show the quality of all residents in the city of Santa Ana. And I'm hoping that, you know, that language can get passed to allow for a wider range of participation in local government. And then on 31, yeah, as a former Elk, I definitely appreciate the renaming of the Elk Lane over by the Wormers site, and that was pretty cool. But just wondering, you know, if that might be a little overkill to have a go from Elk Lane to Lion to Elk Lane again, and, you know, just to make sure that that's okay with the neighbors over there, because they're going to have to change some signage as well. And, you know, pretty, it would be pretty cool to add some placemaking and maybe some monument signage leading to Elk Lane without necessarily having to impact everyone's postal information. Because I think the first site by Wormers, it really affected the Santa Ana Zoo and a new project that was going in, so it wasn't really, you know, too much of an impact. But, you know, other than that, I think that you guys have a lot to get through, so I'll let you get back to the meeting.
Madam Clerk?
Thank you. Zoom ID Victor Mendez, if you would please go ahead and, yes, you may proceed with your comment.
You can hear me now?
Yes, we could hear you now. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, just a really quick comment on Prime Gov. I think Daisy's done a very good job of refining this process. Frankly, I was pretty critical of things when it first came up. And I just want to comment her and her team for being responsive to my comments and perhaps those of others. The introduction and the instructions are so much a vast improvement since the beginning, and I'm glad they took our comments the heart, and I'm starting to work through it. And I think it's going to be a good thing. Wasn't my first impression, but I think, like I said, it helps to listen to your customer and respond. And I think they've done a pretty good job, at least in this respect. With respect to the COVID enforcement, as he spoke, yeah, I do see here in downtown a lot of bad actors, and it breaks my heart because they're good people. And I know them, and I patronize them before, but it does make me very concerned about some of these large gatherings, particularly on Sunday afternoon at an unnamed business, which I used to frequent. I still do. So I think your idea of letters and some type of dressing that this could have implications for the business would be helpful. In my apartment, we're now required to wear masks. So we now have to, you know, we get letters that say, "This will be part of your lease agreement. You'll be in violation of your lease if you don't wear a mask. Please do so." But I think the nice letters that have a good tone, a firm tone, but not an adversarial tone or important. And don't forget, some of these businesses here have got some permit exclusions to extend their business to the sidewalk. They're gathering in large masses, it's kind of taking advantage of the city's good nature. So yes, do do some upfront letters and things that could indicate that they could lose some privileges down the road. And again, the city, I think, as the city manager has indicated, has done a very good job. I know cities that are still kind of flustered and figuring it out. When I say Santa Ana is trying to get their own vaccine, they're almost kind of astonished at that. So again, please continue on that. We need that, and we're grateful for that. So that's kind of the good things. I'm going to speak in general on three, five items, because they all say the same thing, 11, 13, 15, and 16 and 19. And I have to really, you know, it's, this is a stark contrast to the great work in COVID. But the numbers here are about $4.2 million in contingency funding. This funding is not even estimated. It's just a blank 10% on every contract. And this $4.2 million of money that's basically an indemnity to the contractor or to the project, which you are releasing as authorization. Now, I'm sure the staff, we found what we do, auditing, we do oversight. I understand that, but this is not a very good practice, and I really think it needs to be tailed back considerably. It's so egregious that I think one of the items, I think item number 15, for these trucks, which are going through a PO, they're asking for another $10,000 to cover themselves through this process. And this is on a competitive bid on a PO through a joint purchasing arrangement. And that doesn't make sense. On that said, and that note, we do have a local vendor that might be able to help. And so if you're saying, "Well, I need $10,000 extra for this guy", why don't you see what that local vendor can do? And the name of the vendor is Tom's Trucks, and they say they build the spec. And so it seems like there's a loss, another lost opportunity. So I'm going to keep talking about this. I'm going to keep tallying the numbers. Last council tallied up a pretty good sum, and no one spoke out about it. I'm just hoping this council will at least start talking about it, finding a solution, limiting the number of change orders to a certain point, for council approval, and try to restrain some of these dollars that are going out the door, you know, faster than we can think.
Mr. Mendez, your time is up. Thank you.
Yeah.
Caller, with the last three numbers, 303, please dial *6 to unmute your call or select the microphone unmute feature on your device. Thank you. You may proceed.
Hi. I'm actually calling about the Westview project. That wasn't continued, was it? Is that still on the agenda?
Yes, that's item 28. That's public hearing item 28. And still going to...
Okay, great.
It's going to be heard later this, after all the other items.
Do I speak on it now, or do I speak on it then?
Later, when the mayor opens the public hearing item for item 28 at that time.
Okay. Okay, so I will. Thank you.
Caller with the last three numbers, 303. Caller Bernie Dennis, did you want to provide a comment on an item on the agenda, with the exception of public hearing items? Zoom ID Bernie Dennis, did you want to provide a comment? You have successfully unmuted your call. You may proceed to speak.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Bernie Dennis. I'm chairman to the Board of Trustees for the Santa Ana Elks Lodge 794. In 1961, commensurate with the construction of the then-new Elks Lodge across the street from the Santa Ana Zoo, the City Council approved a request from our lodge to change the name of a segment of Burley to Elk Lane. From that point, and for the next 60 years, Elk Lane became the destination point of Elk and many, many community activities held at the lodge. With the recent completion of our new lodge on South Lion Street, we would like to continue the tradition and the precedent and request that the segment of Lion Street between Edinger and its terminus at St. Andrew's be renamed Elk Lane. May I answer any questions in regard to this issue?
Thank you for that comment. It's on the record. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Caller with Zoom ID Lisa Darmush or Darmusay, if you would please select the microphone or unmute feature on your device? Thank you. You may proceed.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we could hear you.
Wonderful. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. My name is Lisa Darmusay. I am the exalted ruler of the Santa Ana Elks Lodge number 794. I'm calling to express my support for the renaming of Lion Street between Edinger and St. Andrew Place to Elk Lane. This would be a wonderful gesture by the city in acknowledgement of the over 119-year history of the great work that the Elks do here. Our Elks charitable activities in Santa Ana include our annual backpack and school supply drive, which we provide over 1,600 backpacks for the children of Santa Ana, as well as the Santa Ana Unified School District, our fundraising for assisting special needs students in Santa Ana, honoring veterans buried in Fairhaven and the Santa Ana Cemetery in Santa Ana each Memorial Day. Our new lodge is currently located on Lion between Edinger and St. Andrew Place. Our previous lodge, where the Elks were located for over 57 years, was located at 212 Elk Lane, near the Santa Ana Zoo. I hope that the City Council will support the new lodge also having an Elk Lane address, so we can once again be home. In appreciation and acknowledgement of the five properties that would be impacted by the street name change, the Santa Ana Elks Lodge would like to work with our neighbors and offer the cost of replacing business cards and stationery for their businesses. At this time, I would like to thank the mayor, the City Council, and all the members for this consideration and for your time this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Zoom ID Rodella, if you would please select the unmute feature on your device or the microphone?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. And I too am calling to express my support for the naming of Lion Street as Edinger, St. Andrew's Place. This would be a great gesture by the city in acknowledging over 119 years of Elks charity activities in Santa Ana. Our new lodge, like our previous speaker said, our new lodge is located on Lion between Edinger and St. Andrew's Place. Our previous lodge was on Elk Lane, 212 Elk Lane, for 57 years. I hope the City Council will support the new lodge also having an Elk Lane address. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. Zoom ID Erica Gonzalez, if you would please select the unmute feature on your device? Thank you. You may proceed with your comment.
Yes, hi. Good evening. My name is Erica Gonzalez. I'm a small business owner, Chicanos Unidos organizer and lifelong Santa Nera who has lived in the Delhi neighborhood for 35 years now. I'm also a co-founder of the South Main Street Business Association, which is a group of business owners located along the South Main Street corridor who are committed to ensuring that all renovations, construction, and projects along the South Main Street corridor are completed in alignment with current residents, business owners, and local employees. We would like to request that the City Council postpone or continue agenda items 11 through 13 until one, the city's general plan is finalized, to ensure that this project... To ensure that this project falls within the shared vision of the Santa Ana community. Two, the commencement of community benefits agreements between residents, neighborhood associations. Business owners and community organizers and developers. Construction companies, city council, and staff. And three, proper and concrete guidelines are implemented regarding notification to impacted residents. And business owners prior to the beginning of the project. To ensure that sufficient time is given for accommodations to be made. Given the current situation with the pandemic and its detrimental impact on our residents. I would like to believe that I'm not the only one when I say. That our focus should be on how to continue to support our most vulnerable populations rather than rush these construction projects. That are not necessary at this time. Um, like I've said before, I want to live in a beautiful city. I want to raise my kids in a beautiful city, but not at the expense of the existing community. I don't want anyone to be displaced. I want to ensure that the vision is a vision of the community. Which for the most part, we have not seen in these projects. So until we are guaranteed this through community benefits agreements, which we've been asking for. For quite some time now. I would like to, you know, I want to believe that you guys want to meet us halfway and. Negotiate with us and organize, uh, you know, and create a vision, a shared vision between all of us. Because at the end of the day, um, it's going to be a, you know, a shared vision and a community project. So I would like, um, like to, to have those postponed. Um, or continued until, until those agreements are met. Thank you.
Thank you for that. I'm going to try one caller, uh, any other callers who would like to speak on any non-agenda or agenda items? Please dial star nine at this time. I will try one caller who did not, um, get in earlier and see if this will work now. Caller with the last three numbers, three zero three. Please dial star six if you would like to speak on any agenda or non-agenda item. Or select the microphone unmute feature on your device. Okay, Mayor, that is all the callers we have who, oh, I'm sorry, I got another person. Um, zoom ID Leti Rodella. If you would please go ahead and select the microphone. Thank you, you've successfully unmuted yourself. You may proceed.
Good evening, members, good evening, members of the city council.
Please, um, Laura that the. Listening the meeting.
I'm ex scholarship chair for the seven nine four Elks Lodge. I'm calling to support, to express my support for the renaming of the Lion Street between Edinger and Andrew Place to Elk Lane. This would be a wonderful gesture for the city in acknowledgement of over the, for the, over one hundred and nineteen years of Elks charitable activities in Santa Ana. Specifically, the scholarships that are available to the high school seniors in the city of Santa Ana. These high schools, these students come from the public, the private, and the parochial schools. Within the city limits of Santa Ana. The scholarships are funded through the Santa Ana Elks Scholarship Funds. The Santa Ana students are also eligible for the many, many scholarships under the National Foundation. And the California and Hawaii Associate, Elks Association. It is my hope that the city council will support the new lodge. With a new Elk Lane address. Thank you.
Great, uh, Madam Clerk, was that the last caller?
Yes, Mayor, that was the last caller we had. Thank you.
Thank you for those calls. Um, let me go ahead and bring it back to the council. Are there any, well, first of all, I believe council member Fan will be abstaining from item number seventeen. Uh, is that correct, council member?
Yes. Um, so I'd like to say before any vote is taken that I am recusing myself from item seventeen, which is the. Approve a cooperative agreement with the city of Irvine. Uh, my, I work at the law firm Ratan and Tucker and we are the city attorney's office for the city of Irvine. However, because this is a consent calendar item, um, I do not have to leave the room. If that is discussed, but I just want to make sure that's on the record. Thank you.
Thank you for that, and I'll bring it back to others if they want to pull any items from the, uh, calendar. I see council member Lopez's hand up, council member?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Sarmiento. I would like to abstain from items six and seven. I was in present at those meetings. Thank you.
Great, thank you for that, council member. Any, uh, council member Hernandez?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would like to abstain from items six and seven. I, I too was not present at those meetings.
Great, thank you for that. Any others, uh, any other items that, uh, anybody would like to pull off the consent calendar? Council member Lopez?
Yeah, I'd like to pull item eleven, twelve, and twenty four.
Great. Thank you, uh, any others? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion for the balance.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is Mayor Pro Tem Penyalosa.
All second, Councilmember Mendoza.
Great, so Madam Clerk, I think we have a motion by Mayor Pro Tem and a second by either council member Becerra or Mendoza. Your pick.
Thank you, Mayor. Um. Do you want to proceed with the vote?
Yes. Please call roll.
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Fan?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Penyalosa?
Yes.
Mayor Sarmiento?
Yes. Thank you, uh, moving along to the first item that was polled. Uh, item number eleven, I believe by Councilwoman Lopez.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Mayor Sarmiento. Um, and I just want to start off by saying that I'm not opposed to this public project. Uh, but in response to our community's feedback, I would like for us to take, go the extra mile here a little bit. And, um, instead of doing a two weeks notice for the businesses located on, um. You know, on Main Street, if we can do a three weeks notice for them, that way they're, um, prepared in advance. And, um, and not just to the businesses, but to the, to the neighbors there as well. And so that way they know what to expect. Um, and also. Um, I don't know if maybe we would want to do or like notices on a weekly basis prior to the construction happening. Um, and then the second point that I wanted to, uh, highlight was that. You know, we, we often hear these, um, topics about, or the concerns. About gentrification being brought up and the impacts of that has on the city. And, and I understand that this is not a development project. Um, but the improvements can have a potential of, of making Santa Ana more desirable. And that is totally okay, that, that's fine. Um, but in order to address these concerns that we often hear. And is it possible for us to collect rental data and to collect occupancy data? Uh, to help us really understand the impacts of these types of infrastructure investments that we are doing? Because at the moment, we don't have anything that we can point to, to help guide our residents. And so I think that, um, right now, we're just working off of the assumption that, that, that there is no impact. But I think it would be smart for us to collect data. And if we're gonna, you know, be, say, or say that we're, that we're going to create policy from a, from a data perspective. I think it would be smart for us, uh, to have that in, in place. And, um, the third point that I wanted to highlight, um. And, and city manager, I have a question. Uh, on this point. Um, can you let me know what kinds of small acts of, of placemaking are going, are being considered? And then I have a fourth question, so I don't know if we want to do the first question first.
Um, Councilmember Lopez, thank you for the questions. Um, we certainly can accommodate additional noticing for, uh, the individuals that reside around that areas along with the businesses. And in regards to your collection, we, we don't have access nor are we privy to individual landlord and their tenant's lease agreements. However, we certainly could analyze through our business license to the extent that new businesses come in and change over. We could certainly track that information. Um, for the details on all of the incredible things that are planned in this corridor improvement. I'm going to ask our executive director of Public Works. And he can walk you through some of the features that are a part of this Public Works project.
Yes, good evening, Mayor, council members, Mayor Pro Tem. Uh, this is Nabil Sabah, executive director of Public Works Agency. The South Main Street Corridor Project includes many improvements. Uh, which includes the new pavement, improvement on the sidewalks, improvement on, uh, intersections. And, uh, a new lights throughout the entire two and a half mile of improvements. In addition to new bus shelters that we're having, uh, installed. Uh, removing the old ones and replacing a new style bus shelters. And also a, um, an improved light system. And, uh, we have two focus areas in the, in the project, which includes improvements on the, um, medians in, uh, trees. And so, so many improvements. And in addition to what we're doing on the, for the above improvement, above, above ground improvements. We're also improving on the water and the sewer system serving that area. So, uh, there is quite a bit of improvement. The project is, is, uh, is a, is a great, uh, price or a cost. Uh, it's one of our biggest projects that we are having in a Public Works Agency here. And we're really excited about going forward with the, with the project. It does touch only on the public right of ways. We are improving again on the sidewalk, curb, gutter, drainage. And, uh, uh, again, across, across streets, uh, all, all throughout.
Thank you, Nabil. Um, specifically for the small, the small acts of placemaking, like, um, are we going to be stamping the cement? The new, the new sidewalks, are we going to be doing that? Are we going to be, are we taking into consideration maybe allowing for tiled art to go in or historic markers? That, that's more of my question. I do understand, um, the, the big improvements that we're doing in, in.
Uh, I, I believe that in the focus areas where we have intersections on South Main. We are using concrete type, um, cross, um, in the intersection itself, which would be stamped concrete, colored concrete. And, um, that's what we're doing right now. In terms of, uh, other features, we, if, we would entertain any, anything that you would like to see. In terms of, uh, tiles and such throughout the, uh, the corridor there. But, uh, we need to kind of told what you like to see there as a, as a council, so.
Yeah, I think something, something, um, because I personally like the, 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 the Santa Ana with the year. Seeing that walking around downtown and other parts of the area. And so if we can do something similar for Main Street, I think people, um, would really enjoy that. And it's, it's a small, it's a small, um, placemaking act. And then my last question is going to be, um, are we installing? Extra conduits for flexible future leasing of use opportunities?
Like you mean, like fiber or?
Yeah.
Yes. That, 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 well, that question came up during the, um, the Neighborhood Association meeting. And we are notifying all of our fiber and communication companies. To let them know that there is an opportunity now for them to, uh, put the fiber conduits in that stretch of South Main. And there is an opportunity right now, in the same time, uh, the city has, is working on an RFP, a request for proposal. To, um, to develop a private public partnership with communication, um, providers. To explore the options of providing network for the city. And we, the city would partner with the private, um, providers to establish those kind of communication initiatives in the city.
Okay, thank you. And Nabil, since I have you, I'm, I'm really sorry, I recognize that this could have just been a simple email sent to you. But, um, there was a lot of staff reports to get through, but the, um, reading through them, I noticed that the headers. Uh, on some of them were inconsistent or, or the date was wrong at the top. And so I'm sure that you and your team are aware of this. And I just, again, I'm, I'm sorry, I should have, um, sent this UBI email. Um, but I'm just, I was going through them rapidly today.
No problem.
So thank you.
Sure. Thank you, council member. I think I see council member Hernandez and council member Becerra. So council member Hernandez, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Sarmiento. Um, my recommendation, uh, Ms. City Manager, is I would like to see more community input. In, in designing the Main Street Corridor. I would like to see more, uh, youth integration, more youth involvement in the planning process. Um, we have an opportunity, a very rare opportunity to, to create a, an environment that prioritizes community. And it's not often that we have these rare opportunities. We're the youngest city in Orange County. Uh, there's a lot of children in that, in that area. And, um, and early childhood experiences matter for all children. The first five year, five years have so much to do with how the next eighty turn out. So I would like to integrate more youth and children and families in, in the process of, of developing this corridor. Um, so that we can create a foundation for future learning, behavior and development. And we can simply integrate more art. We can integrate early childhood, um, development, um, at our bus stops. So that families, while they're waiting for transportation, there's things that children can interact with on the floor. Um, things of that sort. I think that would be really innovative and, and, and great for us to do. Um, and it certainly caters to the families that are in that area. I, I want them to feel at home. And, and I think that that would be something that, that all of us can agree upon. Is that, that we should certainly have a, a family friendly, uh, Main Street.
Thank you, council member. And certainly we can go back and as we work at different placemaking as requested by council member Lopez. Uh, come up with some different ideas of how we can engage the youth. Um, to help craft some of the features that we'll be able to add. And we can return to council.
Thank you. My, my recommendation is perhaps we should start with, um, with our local school district. And maybe working with some of the, the schools that are in that vicinity. Um, elementary schools, middle schools, and high schools. So that way every age, age group is, is catered to. And that way they each have their messages relayed, um, in, in some form of art, whether it's at bus stops, on the ground, or electricity boxes. I think that there's certainly a lot of opportunity for, for, um, positive community development.
Um, thank you. We'll follow up on that. And to Nabil's credit, he has done a lot of work on electrical boxes that I know you're familiar with throughout the city. That are some incredible art. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, council member. Council member Becerra and then, uh, council member Mendoza.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, I wanted to express my appreciation to, uh, Nabil and his team for, uh, proceeding with the dig once philosophy that they've laid out in the staff report. So rather than dig up the street multiple times, I appreciate that his team is trying to be efficient. And minimize the impacts to the businesses and the community. Uh, I do have a couple of questions though for Nabil. Uh, on, uh, page two of the staff report. It indicates that the city notified a total of eight, eight hundred and nine regional vendors. Uh, it says many of which are Santa Ana based. Uh, could you clarify how many of those, uh, eight hundred and nine vendors are actually Santa Ana based, Nabil?
Good question. Um, you know, we, the way we notify vendors is through our planet bid. And contractors that are interested in bidding on city contracts to subscribe to the planet bid. And, um, by choosing a certain category, they automatically get notified of our bids. And the potential for, for them to bid. Uh, I am not sure how many, I have to look at my staff report and find out how many were Santa Ana based. But, uh, it, it is difficult and this is a, a large project. It, it's kind of difficult to find, um, bidders that stationed in Santa Ana to bid on this. It's twelve, over twelve million dollars. And typically, uh, we don't get, uh, contractors of that size coming. It's over $12 million, and typically, we don't get contractors of that size coming from Santa Ana. But we do take very carefully steps to make sure that everyone is notified through Planet Bid.
Okay, thank you for that, Nabil. I just, Christine and Nabil, you know, if we want to really help our community that comes to COVID relief, what better way to do that than to employ folks in our community to help build the city that they live in? And I would ask that we really make a proactive effort. I know there, you know, again, Nabil, you are to be thanked for your attempts to try to streamline and be efficient, but I think in certain cases like this, you know, you hit a very important point, Nabil, in that, you know, this is a big project, and there may be a lot of opportunities. If not for the larger overall management or execution of certain larger parts of this project, there are plenty of small businesses here in town that my hope would be that, you know, we do take a little extra time to pick up the phone and call and just try to directly encourage these folks to bid. And if they're not interested, to try to find out why. And I, you know, many of you have heard me say this before, and I'm going to keep saying it over and over and over until we do it. I really think that this is one of those low-hanging fruits, easy ways to really invest back in our community, just to employ local businesses. I also just want to touch on some of the comments that I heard from my colleagues. I appreciate the enthusiasm and excitement of the design of what the aesthetics could be on this project, you know, whether it's what's at the bus stops, you know, what kind of information. I think Councilmember Hernandez talked about making the community feel at home, and I think that's very important. One thing, though, I want to add, or at least just emphasize, is that what we're talking about here, unless Christine or Nabil tell me otherwise, this is a Public Works project. This is basic infrastructure. This is not a developer coming in and we're trying to excise some sort of benefits from them. You know, the community benefits that we're providing, or that's being provided, running water, the ability to flush your toilet, those are the benefits that we're all going to receive. And as a city council, we're the policy body for municipal entity. That's our very bare basic responsibility, is to make sure that these basic services are being provided. So when I saw this agenda tonight, and I saw the items that, as our city manager had said to me, this is the Public Works Show, and it was, or it is, this is the meat and potatoes of what a city council is supposed to do. These are the kinds of items on the agenda that the community, no matter where you live, whether you live in Delhi, Flow Park, or Sandpoint, this is the stuff you want to see. You want to see your tax dollars invested in improving your infrastructure. So I want to thank staff for putting these items on the agenda. They are big-ticket items, but they're going to make a big improvement. And these improvements are something that will benefit everybody in that area. So with that, I'd just like to say thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. I believe it was Councilmember Mendoza, and then Mayor Protem, and then Councilmember Fan.
Thank you, Mayor Sarmiento. This is a wonderful project. I think it's long overdue. That part of our city has been neglected somewhat. It is an entryway, gateway from Newport Beach, from Costa Mesa, so it should be more welcoming. And with this project that Director Sabah is undertaking, I think it's going to bring just that, and it's going to make that area of our city much more attractive, and it'll probably bring in more businesses to our local vendors in that area. Because I have heard from those businesses in that area that they want to create a council of small businesses in that area, to have something like this done. So it's great that the city is one step ahead of that. And my concern is that we're going to have all these upgrades and beautification. Now we're going to need to take a look at the signage in that area, because the businesses are outdated, they're very old, they need to have a facelift. So are there any kind of funds or grants that we can offer the businesses so that they can start thinking about upgrading their signage and to make it flow nicely with this project?
That's a great question, councilmember. I'm not aware of any off the top of my head, like rehab grants available, but it's something we can certainly research.
Thank you, much appreciated.
Thank you, councilmember. Mayor Protem, and then Councilmember Fan.
Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to thank Director Nabil Sabah for bringing this item forward. It's a Public Works project, and I'm very excited for it. I always like to talk about when you're, you know, running for office and knocking on these doors. I know that the ward I was elected to represent has a lot of this, a huge stretch of this Main Street on there, and the new ward that I'm now in also, you know, borders the huge stretch of Main Street. So I feel, you know, as a rep for this, for a big part of this area, it's what I've heard for years from our neighborhoods, from our neighbors, whether it's Henninger Park, or Wilshire Square, or Madison Park, Memorial Park, all these neighborhoods that are but this Main Street, this stretch of Main Street. They talk about the neglect that they've seen our city go through. I mean, our city is not young. Our city is over 150 years old, and a lot of these areas have not seen any investment into the infrastructure that makes this city. You talk about all these public, what you see in LA, another old city, water mains breaking every other day, causing massive holes and sinkholes in the community, lawsuits, and a costlier situation when these things do not get addressed and this investment isn't made. I've heard from hundreds of residents at our Neighborhood Association meetings and canvassing the neighborhoods, is that why can't we have these stretches of road invested? Why can't we see our tax dollars invested in? Why does Bristol Street take 30 years to complete? We don't want to see it that way. We want to see these roads completed, our tax dollars invested in there, and put to good use to beautify the area. I, it's, I think it's more, we need to see more projects like this. I know for the last couple of years, Public Works projects were in a, it feels like they weren't moving forward, previous leadership and whatnot, but I'm happy to see these come, you know, to fruition now, under your leadership, Mr. Sabah, and the leadership of our city manager, very supportive of this item, and seeing more of this type of investment into our, into our city for years to come. Because it is an old city, it's an aging and crumbling infrastructure that we need to take care of, because this will lead to bigger and costier problems down the road. So I'm happy, I'm supportive. Good work on the staff report. And those are my comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Councilmember Fan?
Hi. So this project was really interesting to me. It's actually something I think I've spoken to the mayor about before I was elected, because it holds a sweet spot in my heart. My first car, I took it to get fixed on Main Street. There was a hole in the muffler, and there's not much they could have done there. But, you know, I attended the community meeting that happened last Tuesday, right before our special council meeting, and there were a lot of community members who were able to attend. Of course, with COVID, it is very difficult, because we can't have in-person meetings, and a lot of people don't have access. But despite that, I think we had over 50 people attend at any given time, so I thought that was really good participation. I agree with everything that my colleagues have said, especially because I, all of us have seen the fact that, you know, dollars are going to invest in areas like downtown and South Bristol and all of these things, and that's great. But, you know, we know that historic South Main has been neglected, it's dilapidated, and this work will fix it, will help it for the community living there. You know, there's no for-profit developer coming in, this is the city. This is when you say, we want the community to get back what we're putting in, to see exactly what we're doing. And I'm really excited to see that the community that feels neglected is actually going to get the investment they need to beautify their streets, make it safer, make it more pedestrian-friendly, make it so that we have more customers coming to the businesses that are already there. We're not displacing anyone, we're not getting rid of any businesses, we're not condemning any properties. This is exactly the kind of work that I want to see for our community. And so I'm excited that Public Works is going to continue having community meetings to talk about the vision of South Main. I know we had some really great comments about how the sign should look, or what other infrastructure improvements we want to have there, and how to accommodate the various types of businesses. And I know that Nabil and his team will do a great job. So I'm very supportive of this item. Thank you for bringing it.
Thank you, councilmember. So I think everybody's had a chance to speak on this, and, you know, look, great comments from everybody, great comments from the public as well. You know, I, similar to Councilmember Fan, I have a special place in my heart for South Main as well, for many reasons. You know, as a child, my uncle used to work at this one repair shop, they used to repair Volkswagens, it was called Nicco Motors, and I think it's still there. But, but more importantly, when I was on the council, when I first came on, I represented that area. So Councilwoman, former Councilwoman Martinez, and I used to share that area, and we always used to say, you know, when are we going to do something for South Main? Because other parts of the city were getting a lot of investment and attention, and unfortunately, it was very, you know, ignored. And so, you know, I get the concern about changing areas and maybe, you know, displacement and gentrifying and moving things in and moving things out. I think this is really a core function that we are trying to solve. It's basically trying to address really a fundamental problem that exists in any aging city, which is, you know, old pipes. Sometimes their diameters are just too small, and we see that in, you know, in downtown a lot, where you, when we get rains, you know, you start flooding and damaging people's property, you know, you flood the streets, and it just makes it very dysfunctional. And I think all that's being done in Public Works projects is we're trying to make it more operational for the existing businesses, because they, you know, are dealing with these challenges all the time, and a lot of times, they have to pay for some of these improvements out of their own pocket. So to the extent we can solve some of those basic infrastructure problems for them, I think it's really critical. Delivering water safely, you know, in clean pipes versus pipes that, you know, are aged, and who knows what is corroded within them? I think that is a basic fundamental, you know, need that we're addressing. So this, yeah, this really, I think Councilmember Fan said it well, this really isn't a private development, this is a public development that is an investment in a neighborhood, in a community that hasn't had this for many years. And I don't think, you know, to me, the benefit goes to those that are there. To the extent that others want to come in and invest and move in, that's great, but really, this project is really intended to improve the lives of the residents, the lives of merchants that have invested there. And years ago, there used to be a merchant association called the South Main Merchants' Association that really was very active, and, you know, they had been working on this years before. Unfortunately, they disbanded, and they no longer, you know, the organization is no longer active. But to the extent that, you know, their hope was not really changing things, just basically improving, you know, basic things like sidewalks, and, you know, and sewer systems and water delivery, and those are the things I think that, you know, people wanted to see. There was another thing that I know they talked about as well, traffic calm, because there were a lot of accidents along South Main, and, you know, just safety. So these are just basic things that I think any community needs. The one last thing I would mention is to Councilmember Hernandez's point. I think, you know, Nabil, if you can maybe sit with some of the merchants and maybe some of the families in the area to talk about aesthetics, and, you know, I know one of the things I've shared with you is, whatever it is, let's make it uniform, because that area is so, it's so unique, because the area from First Street, south to Warner, it really is an Art Deco, you know, architecture style, and not many cities have that. So to the extent that we preserve and protect that, that really makes that area, you know, better for those that are there, better for people who come and visit and, you know, spend their money and do commerce there, because they're going to identify that is a true iconic, you know, Main Street. So if you can, you know, talk about the bus stops, you know, the lighting, you know, even the trash receptacles, whatever it is that, you know, are things that are going to stay there, you know, make them as uniform as you can and as consistent with the theme, and whatever the community sees. And I think, you know, the point that Councilmember Hernandez said was really important, you know, let the youth put their stamp on it as well, you know, the artists, those that are creative, those that want to see that space activated for their generation, and it makes it, you know, makes it livable, makes it placemaking, all these things that we can make improvements on. So I think all of us have had a chance to speak. I'll go ahead and bring it back to the council for a motion on this item, so I'll go ahead and open the floor.
Mayor Sarmiento, I'll move to approve.
And I'll second Mr. Mayor. This is Mayor Protem Peñalosa.
Great, thank you. So we have, go ahead.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just had one final little comment in regards to what you brought up, the safety concern in this, these neighborhoods. I think it's also a great opportunity that as we, we see the investment in this area, we, I mean, we see it now because of how old and narrow this street is, and I'm not saying that I want to widen it because of the, we want to protect our historical buildings, but if there's areas where we could improve that flow of traffic, where we won't have the, we have a lot of cut-through traffic going down Orange Avenue, down Washington, down, you know, McFadden, finding areas along Main Street where these cars, Broadway, cut through, and we see accidents happen all the time, pedestrians getting hit, bicyclists getting hit. On Orange Avenue, I know there's accidents every other week, because these are heavily trafficked areas because of the backup we see on Main Street. So I know that that's part of, that's part of the goal here, is to improve that flow of traffic on Main Street. I'm very excited for this, but let's make sure we keep that safety concern of the surrounding streets in mind as we move forward. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you for those comments. So we have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Fan?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Peñalosa?
Yes.
Mayor Sarmiento?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Great, thank you for that. I think the next item is item 12, also from Councilmember Lopez.
Yeah. So I just wanted, I had a comment, it's not necessarily a question. And Nabil, thank you for your work. I, you know, just because I'm polling these doesn't mean that I'm not supportive, I understand what they are. But I was going through the staff report, and I noticed that the chart listing the consulting firms didn't list the cities. And so on my end, I think it would be easier and more consistent if we, if we would list the cities for the consulting firms, because I noticed that in a different staff report, actually in the item that we just discussed prior, it had a similar chart, and it did list the cities. And so it's just, I think for me personally speaking, it would be helpful, that way I'm not Googling them. That's it, thank you.
We do.
Great, thank you, councilmember. Any other comments or questions on this item? I just think that was an excellent point. One last thing, Nabil, I know when we do, and this is maybe for the city manager, I know when we go out to bid and RFPs or RFQs, what we, I think there's a policy that we have that also goes through some of the background on some of these, you know, some of these bidders, whether or not they have any litigation, bad, you know, you know, labor practices. I think all those things are really helpful. These are huge contracts, so to the extent that we work with good actors, and we go through and we vet them, and maybe a little bit of comment on the RFCA when we're, when we're being presented, to see maybe what differentiates one or the other. It's not always the lowest bidder, sometimes it's the lowest responsible bidder, right? And I think that makes a difference when we're spending this much money. So point well taken by the, by the councilmembers. So I'll go ahead and entertain a motion. Councilmember Lopez, do you want to make that motion?
Thank you, I'd like to move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Great, we have a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza? Councilmember Mendoza?
That was a yes for me.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fan?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Peñalosa?
Yes.
Mayor Sarmiento?
Yes, thank you. Moving along to the next. Yes, thank you. Moving along to the next item, item number twenty-four, council member, uh, Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor Sarmiento. Um, I actually think that this is really great for our finances. And I do think that this can help us build a roadmap into looking at, um, various parcels in the city and their potential for tax revenue, similar to what Manny had commented earlier. And so city, uh, manager, I had two questions. Um, the num- the first one being, do we currently track properties that are underperforming in the city?
In terms of property taxes, no, I would say not. We, um, the property tax assessment is done at the county level. And the, the city receives just a basic levy as a component of that property tax rate. So in terms of, uh, underperforming or overperforming, it would be more of, uh, looking at your uses of property. Cause certainly certain uses, if there's a higher assessed value, it would generate more. But on the assessment itself, on the tax rate itself, that, that's something that is all done at the county level.
Okay, and so would the county or does the city, wo- would we have a list of what parcels have the biggest gaps between, um, you know, potential tax revenue?
We certainly have access on what the assessed values of all of the properties are. But, um, if, I want to make sure I'm understanding your question. You're saying if we have a commercial property that's two point five acres and another commercial property that's two point five acres, you know, comparing them, it would have to do with, um, with the time that they were started. Because the assessments, uh, can only increase a certain amount each year. And then they're reassessed fully if a property turns over. So if you're comparing a commercial building that started thirty years ago with a commercial building that just started five years ago, there would be a significant difference, but it's not, it's not so much because one is underperforming.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, thank you for that clarification. Um, and so maybe, um, so I don't know if these things are something that we can ask this vendor to do. Do you know if that's possible?
To ask him to look for over or underperforming property?
Yeah. Or underperforming properties.
We certainly can explore it. We could, we could ask for things like of a city of our size and with this number of businesses and, you know, how do we compare with maybe other cities that have similar makeup? Uh, uh, that's off the top of my head, but we can explore that for you.
Okay, I would really appreciate that. Thank you.
Great. Uh, any other comments from the council? Questions? Seeing none, I'll go ahead and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to, oh, go ahead, councilwoman.
Thank you. I, I move to approve.
I'll, I'll second that, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. We have a motion by council member Lopez, a second by Mayor Pro Tem Peñalosa. Uh, Madam Clerk, will you please take roll?
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Fan?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Peñalosa?
Yes.
Mayor Sarmiento?
Yes.
Motion carries seven zero.
Thank you, uh, Madam Clerk. That brings us to the end of the consent calendar and to the business calendar items. You know, before I begin, uh, uh, council members, I just want to, I, something I wanted to mention at the front end of the meeting. But, you know, as, as was stated, we're, we're on a new program, uh, this, uh, is it Prime Gov? So, um, we're going through a new agenda, um, formats, as you can tell. So that we have three different, um, uh, agencies that we're going to be, uh, dealing with tonight. The city council, the successor agency and the housing authority. So it's a little clumsy right now. We have to actually, um, adjourn the city council meeting. Then we have to reconvene as the successor agency and then adjourn that. And then we're going to reconvene as the housing authority. But we actually have to physically come, you know, offline. And then, um, and then, uh, reconvene by dialing back. So just so you all know, that's probably what we're going to do at the end of the meeting. Um, normally what we would do is it would be an easy flow. We would adjourn one meeting and reconvene while we're all online. But we, um, from what I'm told from, um, uh, our clerk, and, um, I think Madam City Attorney, you'll probably concur that we actually have to do it this way, uh, now. Is that correct, Madam City Attorney?
Yes.
So just heads up that that's what we'll do. Uh, but what I understand, from what I understand, uh, at the following meeting, these glitches should be fixed and it should be a much more fluid, um, you know, process that we're used to. So, um, in any event, just a heads up for everybody. Um, uh, beginning with, um, our first public hearing on the business calendar, item number twenty-seven, I believe that was continued, uh, by the applicant and all the parties involved to February second. So moving along to the next public hearing item, which is item number twenty-eight. It's the environmental review and general plan amendment, uh, for the Westview Housing Residential Community at twenty-five thirty and twenty-five thirty-four Westminster Avenue. Madam City Manager, is there a presentation on this, uh, on this item?
Yes, sir. We do have a presentation. I'll turn it over to our executive director of planning and building. Min, are you available? You are on mute.
Thank you. Um, I'm unable to share my video at this point. Let me just start here. Good evening, Mayor May Pro Tem and member of the city council. Thank you for your patience as I experienced some technical difficulties. Uh, the item, uh, before you tonight is a proposal for.
Sorry for interrupting, Min, but I went ahead and made you co-host, so you should be able to share your screen.
Thank you. Thank you. The item before you tonight is request for approval of a development project located two-five-three-zero-two-five-three-four Westminster Avenue. The, uh, project is proposed eighty-five unit, uh, development project, uh, entirely of making up of entirely affordable residential units ranging from two, three, four and one bedrooms. Um, the, the project is proposed for fifty-eight extremely low income units as well as twenty-six permanent supportive housing unit with one manager units. Uh, the development is, uh, will be, uh, providing, uh, hundred thirty-six parking spaces, which includes, uh, some tandem stalls as well as providing one point six spaces per unit. Uh, other amenities on the site include, uh, community room, meeting rooms, laundry rooms and other, uh, offices for service providers. Uh, that will be, uh, considered supportive services for residential, residence living, uh, on the project site as well as playground, picnic areas and private balconies and patios. The staff recommendation, as with the planning commission's recommendation on this project, is for the city council to approve and adopt mitigated negative decoration, uh, adopt a resolution approving the general plan amendment and approving the amendment application to change the general plan and zoning designation for the site to accommodate this affordable housing project. The project is located, uh, near the intersection of Fairview and Westminster. Current zoning is C two and the general plan is general commercial. It is surrounded by single-family residence development and to the south as well as other commercial type properties to the northeast and west. This is a photo of the site looking from different perspective on Westminster as well as Huron Street. Uh, the, on July second of two thousand nineteen, there was a request proposal issued by this community development agency for an affordable housing development project. Um, this was using, uh, funding from, uh, both federal and local dollars. Uh, there were four proposals received and rated by a panel, um, who reviewed the projects, CDA. Oh, I'm sorry, Community Development Partners, CDP was the top rated proposal. So on April seventh of two thousand twenty, the city council approved a three point nine million dollars, uh, to fund the project. Subject to committing a hundred percent affordable project, seventy-five percent, uh, being low income, uh, which is thirty percent AMI and twenty-five percent permanent supportive housing. Uh, in terms of outreach, uh, significant amount of outreach was done with this project, um, since its beginning uh, in July with the virtual sun sign meeting. Unfortunately, uh, as with many projects that are being proposed during this process, in-person meetings was not feasible. Uh, however, the applicant worked with staff, um, to complete a, uh, extensive amount of, um, outreach using the virtual meeting format, uh, including reaching out to the neighborhood association, reaching out to residents in the area and then talking to individual neighbors, uh, in the surrounding, uh, properties. Um, and that was done throughout two thousand twenty, um, with recent outreach completed as, as recent as January twelfth to, uh, address some of the additional, uh, question during the planning commission process on making sure that reaching out to the neighborhood, uh, uh, you know, to discuss the project. Um, comments we'll receive at the planning commission meeting to refine the elevation design, uh, on Westminster elevation, uh, to provide a parking management plan as well as, uh, looking at a traffic analysis uh, to evaluate whether or not a stop sign is required, uh, at Sixteenth and Huron. Uh, also to incorporate green elements. The applicant and the city staff, uh, have follow-up on all of these, uh, recommendation by the planning commission. Uh, and a parking management plan has been incorporated into the project. Uh, traffic impact, uh, analysis were completed. And, uh, additional green element is being proposed as part of the project to help, uh, screen the project from the adjacent developments. This is a, uh, site plan of the project. As you can see, the site plan has been designed to push the building towards the front, uh, near Seven, uh, Westminster. And the, uh, development is, uh, providing adequate buffer to the adjacent residential probably development to the south, um, as well as along the west property lines. And that is a field of parking spaces which will be, uh, uh, separated with a perimeter wall as well as, uh, uh, landscape to screen the project from the adjacent residents. This is a high profile. As you can see, the development is proposing three to four story high buildings, uh, with only a very small portion of the building along the front, uh, uh, along Westminster being four story. And this was designed purposely to ensure that the building steps back and respect the, uh, integration with the residential development to the rear. Um, as you can see, at its shortest, um, uh, distance, there is a fifty-foot dist- buffer between the building and the nearest residence. Uh, this is, uh, along Huron and it's only three stories, you can see. And then there is a, also at the longest length, there's a hundred and eighty-five feet of separation, uh, to this nearest residence. Uh, this helped to ensure adequate privacy as well as buffering from the project to the adjacent developments. Here's a rendering of the project. Uh, the, this is looking, uh, from Westminster Avenue, looking, uh, at the project directly, uh, fronting on Westminster. It is attractively designed with contemporary architectural as well as a vibrant use of color, uh, with different material being proposed, uh, for the development. And, uh, it will be a significant improvement to this vacant lot. Here's another view looking, uh, from Huron. As you can see here, the artic- the articulation of the building as well as the lowering of the height of the building to be compatible and consistent with the single-family development to the south as well as a playground that will be open to the community, uh, for use while it's going to be maintained by the development. Um, I went over the parking, but essentially, uh, state law allows for half a space per unit. And for this proj- to the project in terms of affordable housing, that will recite to forty-four spaces. However, the development is proposing hundred thirty-six spaces, which is, uh, ninety-two spaces in excess of what's minimum required for this project site. Uh, in addition to that, as I mentioned, there is a parking management plan for this project. And it will be, uh, required for permit, uh, I'm sorry, it will be required for a program to, uh, manage parking on site for residents as well as a sticker program. In addition to that, um, parking along Huron is, uh, by permit only. And, uh, you know, the neighborhoods in, in the area will be protect- protected from, uh, intrusion of, of, uh, parking from this development project based on the mark parking management plan to ensure that all of the vehicles stays on the property and is parked on the property. Uh, the project will require, uh, the adoption of the mitigated decorative decoration, which include technical studies and ask, uh, different criteria for, uh, CECL review, including air quality, uh, cultural resources, uh, environmental sites assessment. Uh, all of the impacts were found to not, um, have any significant impact, uh, to the adjacent, uh, uh, properties as neighborhood with mitigations and a, uh, negative decoration is, um, being recommended by the planning commission for this project. Uh, the general plan amendment, uh, as I mentioned earlier, is going from general commercial to UN, which, uh, is urban neighborhood, which will allow for a mixed-use development to occur, uh, residential as well as support onsite supportive uses, uh, for this property. Uh, and amendment application is, uh, to ensure that there is consistent, uh, between the development proposal and the proposed general plan. It is proposed to be, uh, specific development number ninety-seven, which allow for project development standard to be, uh, uh, provided for the opportunity development of a affordable housing project on this site. Uh, this again is staff's recommendation is to approve, uh, and adopt the mitigated negative decoration, adopt a resolution proving the general plan amendment, and then also approving the amendment application. That concludes staff's report.
Great, thank you for that, Min. Um, let me go ahead and open the, uh, the public hearing. And, uh, are there any members of the public, Madam Clerk, that would like to address us on this public hearing?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, if there are any members of the public who would like to make a comment on item twenty-eight, public hearing item twenty-eight, please virtually raise your hand by dialing star nine or selecting raise your hand from the Zoom application. Mayor, we do have, um, public comments.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, public speaker with the last three numbers, three zero three, please dial star six. If you're dialing from your phone. Thank you. You successfully unmuted yourself. You may proceed with your comment.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Kimberly Adams. I am the Housing Advocacy Program Manager for United End Homelessness, empowered by Orange County United Way. I'm speaking before you tonight in support of the Westview House development for many reasons, including the fact that the vulnerable in our population are being priced out of their communities with even some headed to the street. United End Homelessness has commissioned studies which reflect that a large number of the homeless are students, families and seniors, and we cannot allow this to continue. In my work, I encountered Anne, a senior who lives in a c- senior community with no affordable housing. Her money is running out and she has nowhere to go, having to choose sometimes between healthy fruits and vegetables and her rent. I recently called Adult Protective Services to provide support for her because she lapsed into a bout of severe depression and panic attacks. I see the distress in her eyes and I think of my own grandmother or mother being in that position because it's not real. This development will also include permanent supportive housing, which has been proven to be a successful model for housing our homeless neighbors. Studies show that affordable housing beautifies neighborhoods with no increasing crime rates or risk to the community. In fact, the expense of housing the homeless is far less than that of keeping them on the street. Further, studies show that a majority of citizens approve of affordable housing solutions. For these reasons, United End Homelessness and Orange County United Way wholeheartedly support this development and ask you to approve it and, um, approve it. I thank you for your thoughtful consideration of this matter and for allowing me to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other callers who would like to speak? Please virtually raise your hand. Thank you. Zoom ID, um, Cole Lee?
Yes, that's me.
Thank you. If you would please proceed.
Thank you, thank you, Clerk. Thank you to council. I, I would just like to say I whole- wholeheartedly agree with Ms. Adams regarding this project and I urge you to approve it, um, beyond, beyond just, this project is not only going to help our city solve our housing crisis, but it's also a, an incredible plan. but it's also an incredible plan in order to combat climate change. As you already know, climate change is the urging issue of our lifetime. And this project has proven to, as I have seen so far, this project will prove to stand to the testing of time as it promotes walkability and bikeability in our city. As we make, as we make as we make retail center and residential area closer together, this will mitigate the needs for driving, which will drive carbon footprint down down in our city. And I would love to see our city becoming more, more green. And thank you so much for allowing me to participate. And that's all.
Thank you so much. Any other public comment, any public speaker who would like to provide a comment on public hearing item 28? Please dial star nine to unmute your call. I'm sorry, so that I may unmute your call or select raise hand from the Zoom application. Okay, Mayor, it looks like that was all the calls we had.
Great. Thank you for that. So I have a technical question for the city attorney just on the way the public hearings are formatted. Madam City Attorney, I always close the public hearings after. You open them so the public can address the council and staff and then close them after the members of the council have, you know, had a chance to comment and ask questions. And then we close it, but I see that this is done differently. So what's your preference? What do you think is more technically correct?
Personally, I like to close a public hearing after all the public testimony and the council questions have been asked. And then I close a public hearing while you deliberate. That's the part of the administrative record that we preserve in the event of a challenge. So I think there is, it's up to you as to what your preference is. If and when we ever get a writ type of challenge, we prepare the full record. All the documentation goes forward to court. So there really isn't a point in time which we say this public hearing is over. But the purpose of the public hearing is to give the evidence and the testimony and the facts. And that's when it should technically be closed.
Right. So that's the way I see it as well, that we close it just in advance of the actual vote because all the deliberative process has already taken place and it's part of the record. All right, let's do it that way. Let's keep it open as we have comments from members of the council. So I'll bring it back to the council. Any questions or comments?
Mayor, before you proceed, I did forget to mention that we did receive three emails, two in support and one in opposition to this particular item.
Great. We'll incorporate those into the record. I see a hand raised. Councilmember Becerra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Min, thank you for that presentation. And I wanted to thank the applicant for their work on this project. I had the opportunity to speak with them. And they have a great team and it looked like they put a lot of thought into what's before us this evening. Just a couple of things, and I mentioned this in my last discussion with the applicant, and that is the renderings are beautiful. Just a personal preference, I'm hoping that the orange will be something that if it's going to be incorporated onto the site, that hopefully it will not be one of the front buildings, maybe towards the back. Because I understand they have a color palette, but I'm hoping they can shift that around. And speaking of color, really more about art on the site. I'm hoping that as they look at to incorporate on the site, you know, the area that they're in historically is known as Berrydale. And I'm hoping that kind of as a homage to the historical background of the area that they may try to incorporate that into some of their onsite artwork. And finally, with the utility boxes that, you know, we see throughout town. As we get these new projects, I want to be more emphatic that we do what we can to minimize any above-ground utility boxes on the sidewalks. It's just, you know, it throughout our city, I think that's just something over time that we've just allowed to proliferate. And it's just, it's an eyesore. It really does it promote mobility. And my hope is that as we go forward, we minimize those. Now, I spoke again recently with the applicant and it sounds like there may not have to be any utility boxes in the right way, but I just wanted to express that for the record. Other than that, this looks like a great project and I'll be supporting it going forward. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Hernandez and then Councilmember Phan.
Thank you, Mayor Sarmiento. Yes, I commend the developers. I think this is a fantastic project. This really excited me to see a developer really be community oriented in developing a project that works for people and meets the needs of residents. So I applaud them for that. I had the honor of meeting with them and learning all about the project and and hopefully when it's up and ready, I'll be touring this project. It's going to be in my district here in Ward 5. And I had recommend to them for them to build a community library to encourage families in that area, you know, to be able to build a community around literacy and education. I think that there's a lot of opportunities for us to do that, especially in this COVID and our library being closed. I know for some families presents some challenges. And if there's a way that we can socially distance and make sure that we're following COVID guidelines and have a community library. I know that we can do some good things there. And I also learned that they will have a playground at this unit. And my recommendation to them was to have some sort of an ADA accessible feature in that playground, whether it be sensory for kids that are on the spectrum or a swing or some sort of a jungle gym for kids that are that struggle with disabilities. I think that would be great to build community around that as well.
Excellent comments. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember, was it Phan? I lost track. Go ahead.
Yeah, no worries. Yes, thank you so much to Councilmember Hernandez for mentioning the ADA accessible playground equipment. I think that's I didn't even think about that. I think that's what makes our council so great because we have people from all different backgrounds who grew up in the city and that was really cool. So, Min, I just had a couple of questions for you because I know some concerns were brought up by neighbors. So the first thing is, you know, I do know there's three to four stories. I don't think that's very high. I am in support of the project, but I just want to make sure that we address some of the issues. One of the neighbors wrote in and was concerned with the fact that, I guess, you know, with three to four stories, this neighbor lives across the street and they were just worried about privacy. I imagine the sight line is, would be quite difficult for someone, even if you're in the third or fourth story, but across the street to really have any sight into your home, right?
In response to that, certainly people living up in the higher floors will be able to view what's publicly viewable from their line of sight. In terms of being able to see into a residence, I doubt that would be able to occur as well as the backyard as the line of sight will not likely be visible through windows. And the rear yard will likely be possible distance.
Right. And the other thing was, so I understand that there were some concerns with traffic in the area, just given that there's an increase in cars. So, sorry if I missed it, but were we looking at a stop sign or something like that? Or was that just on the table for a discussion?
So that was a discussion of the planning commission. As I mentioned, there was a warrant study that was completed. And I'll let our traffic engineer, Zed Kalula, who is on the line to speak further about that. However, the preliminary data indicates that stop sign is not warranted, meaning that, you know, the amount of traffic going through the neighborhood, even with the project, does not warrant installation of a stop sign. And not meeting a warrant means that we as a city not install a stop sign just because it's something that's perceived to be, it has to be actual traffic data that supports need for the stop sign.
Got it. The last thing, maybe not a stop sign, but at that corner on Westminster and Huron. I guess, you know, depending on the traffic studies, one of the concerns is, you know, we are having a playground. It's intended for families. And if you have a lot of cars pulling in that way and they go past the playground before they get into the parking lot. So is there a crosswalk or a push, you know, push to go or some type of blinking lights? I just want to make sure that when we have kids crossing the street a lot, that there's also adults who might need assistance, right? That there is something or that we address that concern.
Yes, and I'll let our traffic team discuss that in terms of the playground itself. It is proposed to be fenced so that, you know, the children can't just running in and out of the playground area. But it is, as I mentioned, accessible to the community. And as such, you know, access will be coming across either, you know, walking from the south on this side of the sidewalk, if coming across on the west side of sidewalk, don't have to cross Huron at 17. So, Zed, can you please share with us if there's anything, any type of signalization or any type of traffic control for pedestrian at Huron and Westminster? Daisy, I believe Mr. Kalula is on your list, in the public list.
Yes, I'm looking for him on the list here.
Hi there. This is Zed. Could you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Zed Kalula with the city's traffic engineering. In terms of any kind of traffic control to provide some safety there for the the park area, we'll have to actually take a look and see if there's anything that we can accommodate. Generally, the type of street there here on is a lower speed type of street. It's traffic bound there, even with the proposed development is on the really light side compared it to other streets. But we'll have to take a look at that. There might be a possibility for a crosswalk over at Huron to at least provide intense crossing. But that location there wouldn't warrant or require any kind of flashing lights or anything like that. But we'll have to take a look at that.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, we check it out because I know people do cross a lot or it might not even warrant it because folks might jaywalk frankly from one side of the Huron to the other. Yeah, and I guess with that, that's all the questions I have. Oh, one other thing. So, were these paid? I imagine some of the grants that the city provided was from the HOFIs? The HO fund?
I don't know if there's actual funding from the WHO, but we do have CDA direct in Mendoza. We know if there is funding from the WHO or is this all federal funding?
Yes, Councilmember, in a sister item to this on the Housing Authority, you'll see that the city has already committed $1.5 million in inclusionary funds. Those are the WHO funds. And then the rest of the money is other types of vouchers and you'll see that later on the Housing Authority agenda.
Got, okay. So they just go together and that's why they're separated from here?
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. That was all.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Mendoza?
Thank you, Mayor Sarmiento. I like the project. It's a adequate size for the amount of land. It's created a significant amount of units, 85 units and the two acres is is really great the way the developer accommodated these buildings. And I really like that there is security all around there. There's gates and then the gates and staff is is there. My understanding is that staff will be at the facilities from nine to five and then thereafter the gates are closed so that only residents are in the playground area and in the common areas. So like the safety feature. In addition, I like that there are vendors and businesses in a market across the street that is easy and within, is accessible to the residents so that there will be more pedestrian traffic and and it's near schools, near the college. So it's a great project overall. The only concern I have is that this is low-income housing and what occurs with that is that the majority of the people that get into this type of housing are actually not Santa Ana residents. So I'd like to see about having some kind of priority given to our residents so that they can get in there on the first, first, first before any other residents from other, from surrounding cities and counties. So is that a possibility that we can take a look at that?
Thank you, Councilwoman Mendoza, and asking that question. Serving our residents is a priority for us and we understand that very clearly as this has been direction of the city council. We work very closely with, I, with CDA and CDA staff working very closely with the development community whenever we推进project. That is the, one of the highest priority is to make sure that residents from Santa Ana are prioritized for eligibility to be a part of this development project. While we can't guarantee 100% will be from Ana as this would violate the Fair Housing Act. Through that process, my understanding is that we have a very high ratio of residents in Santa achieving residence at these development projects.
Thank you for that information, Director Ty.
Thank you for those comments, Councilmember. I think everybody's had an opportunity to speak. I'm very supportive of this as well. I really like the 30% AMI on 58 of those units. That was, you know, that's exactly where we need to be. The only other question I had was, you know, something that Councilmember Mendoza mentioned, I think it's an excellent point. And I know we've had this discussion in the past where we have these units that are, you know, that are these developments that are affordable. And they go to people from outside the city. And we know fair housing law prohibits us from, you know, setting those aside exclusively for Santa Ana residents. But I've seen other cities and other communities set up the criteria so narrowly that they comply with federal law at the same time, really giving a benefit to their residents. And Santa Barbara is one of them. So, you know, I spoke with their, you know, city manager and their city attorney over there. And you can get creative. And I think the points of, you know, not just that were made now, but that have been made in the past about our affordable units and the fact that we have our in lieu fees and other, you know, federal fees that we use. You know, obviously the federal monies that we use, the home monies and others, that triggers the federal compliance, right? So we know that that has that. So we can completely, we could keep it to Santa Ana residents if we decided not to use those monies, but to not use those monies make it cost prohibitive. So very difficult, but we can be creative in our drafting. And maybe you work with our city attorney to do some research on how we can do that and be compliant. But at the same time, be really effective in the way that we deliver these units for our residents. So I think all those things are, you know, are excellent points. I see, I see one more hand that's raised. Mayor Proten, did you have a question on this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to state that I didn't initially get a chance to comment on this project. Just wanted to also state that I'm supportive of this. It's important that us as a city, I mean, leave it to Santa Ana to continue, you know, doing it as we should. You know, it's always a little bit of both. You know, it's important that we have a diverse housing stock in our city so that we attract people of all income levels and support those individuals that live in our city that could, you know, that would be beneficial to this, beneficial of this affordable housing project, high-quality project, much needed in that area of these vacant lots that have been sitting there for a while. And it's, it would have been nice to see a larger community support for this project. I know that we're constantly seeing a lot of good affordable housing projects approved in our city. And we hear crickets from all the affordable housing advocates out there in our community. And we only hear from them when we have other types of projects in there. And it's important that we have this diverse housing stock. I'm excited to see this come forward. Thank you, Min, and your staff for working very closely with the app. Very closely with the applicant to make sure that we, we have a good quality project here. And uh, happy with the parking and whatnot. And I just want to also just, I believe it was also mentioned by one of my colleagues. Is that we, we rope in that neighborhood uh directly behind it. I know we heard from some residents that live there about the impacts that they could potentially be seen. And i- it's a, it's a very quiet neighborhood, single family homes. So whatever we could do to keep them in the loop as this project moves forward. Uh, would be very appreciative of those efforts. But that is it, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you for those comments. Uh, uh, seeing no further comments or questions, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And I'll bring it back uh, uh, to entertain a motion to move the staff's recommendation.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Mayor.
I'll second.
Great, we have a motion from Mayor Pro Tem Peñalosa and a second from Councilmember Fan. Uh, Madam Clerk, will you please call roll?
Councilmember Becerra?
Yes.
Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes.
Councilmember Lopez?
Yes.
Councilmember Mendoza?
Yes.
Councilmember Fian?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Peñalosa?
Yes.
Mayor Sarmiento?
Yes.
Motion carries on and down.
Great, thank you, everybody, so that uh finishes up our, our business calendar and. Boy, we, we don't have eighty-five As anymore, so I guess um, does, does that mean though they go away, is that, is that what happened here? Did you just uh decide to number them in sequence so we have no more eighty, no more opportunities? So we're going to call them council member requested items. That's not as fun as eighty-five As and eighty-five Bs and Cs and Bs, but. But we'll, we'll go with the flow, so um, I, but I like the numbering, the sequential numbering. The, you know, the fifty-five Cs and fifty-five Bs and sixty-five As was kind of confusing, so this is. This is a lot more linear, this is kind of the way my mind thinks, so maybe easier, right, I should say more basic. Um, so let me go ahead and uh, uh, go to item twenty-nine, which is uh. An item raised by Mayor Pro Tem Peñalosa to discuss and consider directing the city manager to explore opportunities. Through neighborhood initiatives to better recognize and communicate. With the duly appointed representatives of our neighborhood associations, Mayor Pro Tem, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thi- this item I wanted to, to put forward, it's pretty basic and simple. Um, I know that there are currently uh changes at the leadership level from our neigh- neighborhood initiatives program. I know unfortunately, we, we know Scott Cutner, great asset and. And uh institutional knowledge to our neighborhoods in the history here in San Ana uh has retired. Um, as of last month, I don't believe he, he came back, you know, this new year. Uh, so I wish him happy retirement and thank him for, for everything that he did for our neighborhood initiative program. But I think that, that, you know, with his retirement, we still have Margarita who's fantastic with her neighborhoods as well. But it, it opens up the opportunity to, to reimagine and, and. And look at ways that we can improve our neighborhood initiatives program and just make them stronger, ma- ma- give them a, a larger voice. Um, this was prompted, um. Uh, the, the, you know, I was, I was prompted to put this forward because. I know that recently we've had decisions made in, in various neighborhoods. That sometimes feel that are, that are driven by just the neighborhood association. Board or a couple of handful of individuals. And, and I've heard from numerous residents throughout the neighborhoods. That they, they, you know, they don't know about these neighborhood meetings going on or. They don't know who their neighborhood association president is or who the board is or if there's an opportunity for them to run. And be president of the neighborhood association uh neighborhood in any part of the city. So, eh, you know, eh, I was, I was thinking this is a great opportunity for. You know, to direct the city manager to work closely with the neighborhood initiatives program. On their planning and building, I know it's, it's in a executive min ties uh area. Uh, but ways where we can make this better and make it more inclusive and. And make it's uh invitable so that the, the residents, you know, aren't, I've been to dozens of neighborhood association meetings over the last. Two years and, eh, you know, it's unfortunately always the same two, three people at these neighborhood meetings. Given that we're a city of nearly half a million people. And you go to these neighborhood meetings in, in one of the densest parts of the city and you see three people there. And one of them's me, uh, or, or one of them's the, the neighborhood initiatives. Uh, staff member, you know, that's problematic and. It could by, by investing in this department, in this area, in this program throughout our city. Making it so that it's more accessible to every resident in the city and put that information out there. That's gonna um, be beneficial to all of us so that decisions aren't being made. Uh, by one or two people uh in the neighborhoods, in the, the various neighborhoods and it's more inclusive of the entire neighborhood. Like I'm rambling now, but that's basically it, it's just wanted to, to open it up so that we could have an opportunity to, to. Look at it, loo- look at our program and see how we can just make it better. And I'm open to suggestions and, and input from my colleagues. Um, Mr. Mayor, that, that, that's it.
Thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tem, let me bring it back to the council. Um, I see council member fans hand raised, virtual hand raised, please, council member.
Oh, thank you, uh, Mayor Pro Tem for bringing this item, I definitely echo a lot of what you've said. I've attended a number of neighborhood association meetings throughout the city, not just uh Riviewes, but I know, you know. Not every neighborhood is floral park, right, and they have their, their monthly newsletter and it's amazing, but. A lot of our neighborhoods are just, you know, the regular folks trying to come together and um. Trying to make it work and I know some neighborhood associations need assistance with um. Kind of structuring their meetings or uh needing resources to help run the meetings and things like that, so I think that's areas where we can. Um, the city itself can provide resources, whether it's Robert's rules or how to address some of these issues. Um, I would definitely like to see that because it would be great to have, just like us, right, on the council, you get turnover. We want term limits, um, I think it would be great to have something reflected in a neighborhood association. To really force all of our neighborhood leaders to go out and help either mentor, encourage or engage a new generation of leaders. So they can get involved in the neighborhood associations, um, that would be fantastic.
Thank you for those comments, council member, council member Becerra?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem for bringing this item forward, I, it's kind of really. Opportune and, and well timed because, you know, as, as the mayor was talking about former city manager Reem and. You know, his time and investment into the neighborhood associations. You know, one thing that I was always excited about with San Ana's neighborhood associations was. As I was graduating college, the city of Los Angeles was embarking on a whole revamp of their charter. And when they came back with the draft, the main, I guess, a feature, the, the new feature was neighborhood councils. But the difference between LA's versus ours was LA sunk a lot of money in, which sounds great. But LA really had to hold their hand and kind of be referee. Whereas with San Ana, I, I always loved what we did here because city staff really kind of sowed the seeds and, and, and. Found local leaders and nurtured them, I'm not sure if we still have the neighborhood leader program where. Uh, folks from the community initiatives or neighborhood initiatives staff identifies folks and tries to. Help nurture them so that they can become, you know, future leaders within these neighborhood associations. Uh, so I really appreciate Mayor Pro Tem bringing this forward because I think we really do need to. You know, take stock of our neighborhood associations and invest in them. And I know with uh Scott Cutner's recent retirement, we lost a wealth of uh institutional knowledge right there and I know Margarita. Is picking up the slack and doing a fantastic job, but. I, I think that, you know, what we really need to keep in mind and I hope that we continue to do this is. That the city continues to aid these associations and we let them flourish um naturally. Because I think that, that's just one of the things that San Ana really can be proud of regionally in how we nurture. I mean, right now we're up to sixty-four associations, uh, I think that's fantastic, my only recommendation. One more recommendation, I mean, to uh staff would be. Our website, when it comes to finding information on our neighborhood associations is not well organized, it just isn't. And uh, I was thinking that Mayor Pro Tem with his um positions on trying to improve technology might have said more about that. Uh, because I know that that's always been an issue, him and I have talked about as far as trying to improve. Our online presence so that we're more transparent and available to the community, but I think that. I would ask staff to really look at how we can better organize that portion of our city's website so that. You know, a lot of people probably don't even know that they live within the boundaries of a neighborhood association that exists today. The whole city is not covered by a, an actual established neighborhood association. And so maybe someone can go online and be able to identify that they're not in an area that has one today and then. They can take that initiative, working with staff to try to grow a new association. With that, I would ask that we try to see um how we can improve access to neighborhood association information. On our site and I'll just conclude with, again, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and for all my colleagues' comments on this item.
Any other uh comments or questions? Mayor Pro Tem, I think, go ahead.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, really quick, I just wanted to, uh, um. Uh, Councilman Becerra reminded me, um, you are one hundred percent right, I, I should have mentioned that uh with our website. But the only reason, I'm going to toot my own horn a little bit, the only reason why the neighborhood initiatives button is on our homepage was because about a year ago. I, it took me about fifteen minutes to find the neighborhood initiatives page on our website. So I, you know, called a meeting and or an email, I forget what it was and. So if, when it, for anybody that goes to our city's main webs webpage. The neighborhood initiatives button uh is on the front and it'll take you directly to where you need to go. But it still needs work, I admit, so um, that, that, that is it, Mr. Mayor. But thank you for that, Councilmember Becerra.
So, so we have you to blame for that, all right, uh, now we know. Uh, just kidding, Councilmember Mendoza?
Uh, thank you, uh, several years ago, uh, we used to have a very active um. Neighborhood uh initiatives and there was, our neighborhoods were meeting regularly and it was great to have a. There was always a police officer there, code enforcement or other special guest speaker on. Issues relating that, to the, that particular neighborhood. And so that was pre-COVID and understandably, uh, we cannot meet in person. And many of our residents are really not uh savvy on, on technology, so. If we could have, once we identify the neighborhood leaders, uh. If we could have some kind of training and maybe perhaps have a computer loner program where that person can. Have uh the ability to uh set up the meetings through Zoom. Or have our staff set them up and then uh have a, a location where. The residents can come and do a social distancing uh viewing of, either through the. Computer or on screen or smart TV. Or some way where they, where we can continue meeting and, and us as uh. The designated representatives, uh, we could also show up for those meetings and, and address their concerns. So I'm thinking some kind of a technology support for these neighborhoods, thank you.
Great, thank you for that, council member, I think um. I think staff has a, a long list of things, you know, to, to pursue. So uh, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem for bringing that up, the only thing I was going to say is that. I love technology, technology is great, but we have a community that is. You know, has trouble and is challenged when it comes to navigating technology, we have people who are elderly. We have people who are monolingual Spanish speakers, we have people who are not connected to the internet. So those are the basic challenges that I see. Um, it's easy to put up a bunch of technology and say, you know, go ahead and go out there, but as we saw during, you know. You know, as we see as, you know, our elderly community trying to register for vaccines, one of the things that I've gotten is. You know, look, they just can't, they, they don't know how to navigate that space, I mean, for most of us, I mean, we know it well. Um, present company excluded, but um, you know, most everybody that's young knows that, but we have. Not only an, you know, a community uh that has a lot of seniors, but we have a community that has, you know, uh, you know, language barriers. And um, and so those are things that I think old school methods, flyers, doing things that are basic to get people's information and to inform them. Uh, you know, that, that's something that we should not abandon. I hope that we continue with that because when, what we saw during the whole CARES Act thing was we went to go door knock and, you know, and that. That does seem old school, that doesn't seem as, as the most efficient way to do things, but it got people help. And so I think, you know, as we engage them with other services, that's something that we never want to forget, so. Um, so thank you for all, all those comments, let's move along to item number thirty. Which is uh Councilmember Lopez's item, that's to discuss and consider directing the city manager. Uh, to direct staff uh to amend ordinance number NS dash two nine nine two. Removing uh qualified elector requirement to serve on boards and commissions from the Santa uh municipal code. And to be in compliance with SB two two five, uh, Councilmember Lopez.
Thank you, Mayor Sarmiento, and so this came about because uh like most of the newly elected council members, I'm going through the process of. In your reunion folks for the um commissions and through that I realized that um. Our undocumented residents didn't have the opportunity to. To utilize their talent in our local democracy, um. And so AB two two five, for those of you that don't know, was signed into law in October of twenty nineteen by Governor Newsom. And AB two two five changed the language um to be more inclusive of, of people. Of all people regardless of their immigration status. And um really offered, really give local governments the opportunity um to have a full range of, of. Of making sure that we provide our residents, not just the learning opportunities that they desire. But the service opportunities that they are looking for as well. And right now our own language and our ordinance um really procures us from doing that. And so in twenty eighteen, the city, um, the city charger was amended, was updated to allow. The council the ability to change the commission requirements via the adoption of an ordinance. And so right now, you know, we have ordinance NS two nine nine two. And which was adopted in September of twenty twenty, if I'm not mistaken. Um, and it includes this qualified elector language that prohibits ultimately um. If folks, regardless of their status, to serve on, 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 on any commission. Um, and so I would like us to remove this qualified elector language from our ordinance. I think it's, it, it's very sim- not just symbolic, but um because we are such a predominantly, you know, migrant. Uh, community, it's, it's, it's nice for, for folks to be, to feel represented and to see themselves in these roles. Um, and so I don't really want there to be anything that prohibits our Santa Ana residents from. Um, being engaged and offering their services to the city.
Great, thank you for that, uh, uh, Councilmember Lopez. I see um Councilmember Hernandez's name, or hand raised, I'm sorry, Councilmember Hernandez?
Yes, thank you, I want to thank Councilmember Lopez for, for bringing this item um to the dais, I think it's, it's important. Uh, thing that, it's, it's, it's important that we acknowledge the value of our residents. And, and that we look beyond um the barriers that, that I know a, a lot of. A lot of the times government puts on, on residents in our community and I believe. That people should have the, the ability to not only champion. Um, public policies that, that are rooted in liberation, but they should be part of that democratic process as well. And as a city, I think that this is a step in the right direction. It's beautiful that this is happening day after MLK Day. Um, I hope that this is something that all my colleagues are on board for. I, I think it, it certainly helps liberate a lot of those voices that have been left out of the conversation. I support it wholeheartedly.
Thank you, council member, I, I see uh, uh, Councilmember Becerra's hand raised as well. But quick question for you, Madam City Attorney, I thought this was a. A, you know, something that we had already tackled previously because I think I was one of the first council members or to appoint somebody who. Uh, was uh, you know, was undocumented, um, and, you know, was it exclusively to measure X? Um, I, I thought it was just basically a policy that we said. Look, we as a city that has, you know, fifty percent of our residents who are, you know, foreign born and a high number of um. Undocumented, I just thought that we, we had already, this was, this was sort of a, an asked and answered question.
So, and thank you, Mayor, you know, back in November of two thousand eighteen, when the charter amendment was made, the intent was to pull. All of the charter language into the municipal code so that we would have more flexibility in making changes to the ordinances. Um, and in that effort, what happened is the charter language had the qualified elector lang- qualified elector language in it. And so we cut and pa- literally cut and pasted it into the new ordinance, so. Um, the, that qualified elector language did not apply to every commission and only. It only applied to the commissions that were listed in the charter itself. And that explains why, in your instance, that was not an issue. And then what happened is that ordinance, we kept saving it to be part of a much larger cleanup. And in the meantime, SB 225 was passed. So that's kind of how we ended up where we are. So I've already in anticipation of this item, located the language that needs to be revised to be consistent with this law. And if that's the direction from the council, we'll prepare that for your next meeting.
All right. Let, let me go ahead and go back to the council, Councilmember Becerra, then Mayor Pro Tem, Daniel Loza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I too support the item and I appreciate it being brought forward. Mr. Mayor, you kind of stole the question I was going to ask, which was, you know, I thought that this had been addressed already. And then obviously with the subsequent state legislation, that obviously has helped pave it, pave the way and make it easier for us. But, you know, in part of my conversation this afternoon with the city attorney, I realized something, as she was trying to explain where we would be impacting our municipal code in regards to this. Because I couldn't find the term qualified elector as it related to commissioners. But then, yeah, as, as the city attorney and I were talking more, I realized that as I was looking at the municipal code online, some of the sections that we as a council had modified or, or brought forward into the municipal code in 2020 had made it to the online version. So I'm going to ask our city clerk, and I hate to ask it this way, but I will. How outdated is our online municipal code? Because what really, you know, frightens me frankly is that, you know, there are folks that utilize online municipal codes like myself, and I'm sure some of my colleagues when it comes to work that they do during their day jobs. And so I know that, you know, nowadays, we rely on what we see online for municipal code. And that can make or break a decision on whether to push forward with a certain effort or a project or something. So I would just like to ask our city clerk, how outdated is our online municipal code?
So our municipal code that's available online through municipal code is updated by supplements every six months. And what we have been doing is updating the ordinances through Laserfish. So anytime anybody wants to see any ordinance that has been adopted by council, they would have to go through our Laserfish public portal in order for them to access any ordinances that will eventually be codified and embedded into that municipal code website, which is where everybody looks for everything that's already been done. And it is done every six months, so it'll be done in January and in July.
Daisy, I, I have to ask, it's every six months in this day and age, I mean, it might as well be six years. Is there a way that we could do it just a little bit quicker?
I could definitely reach out to the vendor and find out. I, I think that contract was probably drawn out long before I was even here and has just been proceeding that way. And, and I know in other jurisdictions, my previous jurisdiction, it was done immediately after. I think they do it within a month. It, there is always a fee associated to those things, but I could definitely reach out to the vendor and find out what that would look like.
I mean, just because we've been doing it very slow for the past however many years is not acceptable. Especially when folks are trying to understand what our rules are, including the city council, who actually is helping to make the laws here. So I, I would really appreciate if you could report back to us on how we can expedite the process of updating our online municipal code. It, it, really, it's unacceptable for folks to look at that site and not be able to see it. And today, I mean, Sonia and I sounded like Abbott and Costello trying to talk about, you know, where, where the section was and what was actually put down. Because I, I kept thinking to myself, well, why would I come to the site and put there, it's not mentioned anywhere. And lo and behold, it is mentioned somewhere, but nobody could find it online. So I would appreciate seeing that updated. And again, I'm supportive of the item before us tonight. Thank you.
And just for clarification, Councilmember Becerra, it is updated on the website, it's just listed under ordinances. It's not codified, which means that it's not found in the section that it was adopted in. So, but you can find it, it is available online, and maybe it's just providing instructions on how to get it. But getting them to update it and codify it is another conversation I could have with them.
Well, Daisy, I mean, since you brought it up, I'll just say, I don't find that acceptable. I think that when we adopt it, let's get it codified, let's get it in the code. I don't want folks to have to play scavenger hunt through our municipal code. I mean, municipal code language isn't fun to look through as it is. And then to make it more onerous to look through is, again, it's not acceptable. So I'm looking forward to you bringing back something that'll be an update that shows us how you're going to get the language codified much quicker than six months.
Okay.
Great. Thanks for that comment. And I like the Abbott and Costello reference. So Mayor Pro Tem, Daniel Loza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to thank Councilmember Lopez for bringing the item forward. Very supportive of something like this, given the fact that our demographics and community should and, and need to be reflected in, in our local, at all local level of various levels of government. And I'm happy to support this. Kind of almost questioning along the same lines as you, Mr. Mayor, is I thought this was something that was already allowed because of what we had seen on the Measure X Committee and whatnot. But that was a separate ordinance, I believe, that was brought forward. And this is, as we move forward, you know, this is a conversation that we should bring back in regards to the, the how outdated the language is, is in, in our, you know, municipal code, our charter. It's not reflective of the community that we are. I know that one of the changes that I was trying to make to, along with, I, I believe you, Mr. Mayor, and Councilmember Becerra earlier this year, to our city charter was just the, the, the simple pronouns used in our city charter. It refers to the city manager and the city attorney as he, and I believe the clerk is referred to as she. I mean, that is just embarrassing that we have that language in our charter when our three direct employees are all women, and, and they're doing a fantastic job. So, you know, whether it's a charter, whether it's a municipal code, there's a lot of areas that are not reflective of, of our community and the way that our city is, should be represented. So thank you for that, Councilmember Lopez, for bringing this forward. Very supportive of, of moving in this direction and over the items. So thank you. And that is it, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks for that, Councilmember Fan.
Thank you, Mayor. Let's just really briefly, Councilmember Lopez, thank you for bringing this forward. I know when we had the resolution regarding the insurrection, right, we all agreed that it was about people, not just citizens. I would like to see that, you know, as we move forward with this, removing the qualified elector language, that whenever we have any type of documents, programs, appointments, or anything like that, that involves bringing in residents of the city, that we stay consistent and that we make sure it's open to all under SB 225. But other than that, I also want to say that I have no idea who Abbott and Costello is, and I think I'm not the only one. And that's all. Thank you.
That's why I mentioned it, man. He, he was dating himself though. So there, there was only a few of us that caught that. So in any event, I think, yeah, everybody commented on this. I think Madam City Manager and Madam City Attorney, you guys, you know, probably got, got most of those. Councilmember Lopez, all I was going to say is, you know, I know your hand is raised, I want to call on you right now. Thank you for bringing this up. And I know and I would have joined with you, I just got by me, but, but go ahead. You have some closing comments?
I do. Thank you, Mayor Serviento. And I want to thank all of my colleagues for their support. And I also want to thank the city clerk and the city attorney for answering all of my questions at all random hours of the day. And, and I just quickly wanted to ask what, what is going to be the turnaround time for this?
From, from the city attorney's perspective, it, we, we can prepare it for the next meeting. It's a very, it's a minor amendment. It will require a first reading at your next meeting, and then a second reading, and then it will go into, it'll go into effect 30 days later.
Excellent. Thank you all. Let's move along to the next item. Item number 31, which is an item brought by councilmembers Becerra, Mendoza, and Mayor Pro Tem.
Mr. Mayor, go ahead. Really quick, I just wanted to let Councilmember Lopez know, and staff's probably going to hate me, but Councilmember Lopez, you're in charge here. So if you want this in seven days, we could, we could direct the staff. I know that staff's already, you know, gonna hate me for this, but, but I'm kidding, you know. I, I, whenever you guys could have this forward, Madam City Attorney, I would say, since we didn't really give a direct direction, I, I would, because of, of the craziness going on, I would, I would personally say, you know, if we could, 30 days, maybe the second meeting in February, have something forward, or the first. I know that there's probably appointees that Councilmember Lopez wanted to make. So I think, I would say the sooner the better.
All right. Hearing no objection from the city manager or the city attorney.
If I may, Mayor, just make one comment.
Sure.
Um, Councilmember Lopez does not have to wait for this change to be made to nominate the individual she once appointed due to the state law.
Great point. Got it. Okay. So seeing no other comments, let's move along to the last item, which is to discuss and consider directing the city manager to begin the process to change the name of Lion Street between Edinger and St. Andrew's Place to Elk Lane. And I believe that's yours, Councilmember Becerra, along with Councilmember Mendoza and Mayor Pro Tem.
Yes, thank, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, real quickly, one last comment on the last item. I was, I was a little nervous that the Mayor Pro Tem was going to call another special meeting. So I think staff and his colleagues breathe a sigh of relief that we can still have Councilmember Lopez nominate her, her commissioners. As far as the item in front of us, I wanted to first begin by thanking all the folks that called in earlier this evening and supported this item. And I wanted to acknowledge and thank Mayor Pro Tem, Penalosa, and Councilmember Mendoza for joining me on this item. You know, the, the Elks here in San Ana have taken part in numerous charitable activities throughout our community since 1902. It's ranged from annual school supply drives, awarding of scholarships, fundraising for those of special needs here in San Ana, and honoring our veterans each Memorial Day for those that are buried here in cemeteries in San Ana. And as some of the folks who called in earlier this evening mentioned about, you know, almost 60 years of their 119-year history, they were located over on Elk Lane, right across from the San Ana Zoo. And in 2019, they sold their property and they moved over to South Lion into a beautiful new lodge that has been celebrated throughout the Elk Organization. So tonight, what I'm hoping is, as this new lodge is located on South Lion over there between Edinger and St. Andrew's Place, I'm hoping that my colleagues will support the idea in front of us to proceed with the renaming of that particular portion of Lion Street. And as I think it was pointed out earlier, the, the impact would be very minimal. There's probably less than a handful of businesses that would be impacted. And I wanted to express my gratitude to the Elks, who I believe had mentioned that they'd be willing to assist some of those businesses in the transition, whether it's through their updating their business cards or their letterhead to accommodate the new Elk Lane. So I think this would just be a fantastic way to honor an organization that has such a long legacy of charitable activity here in the community. And it would be nice for the Elks Lodge to continue their tradition of being located in the city of San Ana on Elk Lane.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Mendoza.
I did all my colleagues' remarks. I am also an Elks member. And I feel it is appropriate for us to proceed with this name change because it's a small token of appreciation for an organization that has been part of San Ana's longstanding history in benefiting our, our constituents. So everything that Phil said, I, I totally agree. And it's, I don't think we'll have any opposition from the vendors because it's also a, it has enhanced and increased the value of, in that area. And, and the businesses can become members and, and they have incredible food and events, of course, of course, at a social distance and more pre-COVID. So that's why I joined in this item to make that, that small contribution in honoring this very significant organization. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I personally didn't become an Elks member for the events. I became an Elk for the $3 beer. Great investment, everybody, whoever's listening out there. But I, I wanted to, you know, I'm supportive of this item. It, it'd be nice to see that, that same change that we saw over on, on Elk Lane and First Street, you know, way back when. To see it, you know, on this side of town, between, online, between, I want to say, Edinger and, and St. St. An, is it Anahers? St. Andrew. And I, I do, what one of the speakers, one of the public commentators said that, that did stick with me is, is because of how, we know how tough, you know, the last year has been on our local businesses. And knowing that with this, I know it's only like six or seven businesses on that little stretch, but they're going to have to pay money to, to change their, their letterhead, their business cards, their, their website. They're minor changes, it's not, but it, it is at a cost. And if, if there's a way where, where we could find some, some funds somewhere available that we could use as a grant to make it available to those that, that really need it for those small costs that might come out of this, I, I'd be, I'd be interested in looking at something like that, a Madam City Manager. And just because of the circumstances we've been in the last year and knowing that, that these businesses, a lot of them have struggled, whether those particular businesses have struggled this last year or not, I, I don't know. I know in a lot of businesses, depending on the sector you're in, but it'd be nice to, to look to see if that is going to be a burden on some of them. The, the stationary stuff isn't, isn't cheap, it's, it's expensive. And wherever we could do to help, and those areas where we can, you know, it, it'd be, it'd be nice to, to, to do.
Mr. Mayor, if I, if I could just real quickly address what Mayor Pro Tem said. One, one of the speakers, who's a member of the lodge, had offered that the lodge would assist those businesses with the transition in their stationary and their, their business cards and other related items. So I, you're on the exact same page that they are. And with everything going on, they're, they're definitely, I think they value this enough to commit to helping their neighbors out on this particular exercise.
That's what I heard too, so.
That's awesome. That'd be good. Yeah.
Uh, thank you. Councilmember Fan.
Yes, so I appreciate that we all heard that because, you know, I'm an Elk myself, sponsored by my colleague, Councilmember Becerra. And it's a great space, lots of folks have events, quinceañeras and things there, so that's really great. Especially once we are able to open up again. I would like to see city staff working with the lodge to assist the neighboring businesses. Frankly, it's just really tight right now, especially since we've allocated $750,000 for COVID relief dipping into our reserves. So I just want to make sure that, you know, this is a nice to have. I fully understand why we want to do this, but it doesn't have to be right now. And if it's going to be right now, I'd like to see that the lodge step up and really facilitate any of those costs. And so, you know, City Manager, please work with them on that before we finalize anything with the name change. I, I don't want our city to be the one bearing the cost of that right now. The other thing I wanted to mention was, if someone can find out for me who Lion Street is named after, I know that, you know, we're, clearly someone named the street after a lion, a person. And now that we're renaming, I would just like to know who it is and like the history that comes along with it. That would be really great, so that we can also honor whoever came before us.
Great. Great, thanks for that, um, I see no other hands raised and, uh, I think everybody had a chance that wanted to speak, I think, um, uh, staff, you have enough comments, uh, and for direction, so, great, so I think that was the last item, um, that we had for the evening, at least business items. Um, let me bring it back now to the City Manager for her comments, but maybe before we do that, uh, let me call on Councilmember Fan, cause she had a clarification to make on a prior item that, uh, uh, she recused herself on, go ahead, Councilmember Fan.
Yes, thank you, um, I didn't make it to the very opening of the meeting, but, um, I was recused from closed session item A, that is the twenty-five, twenty-five uh, Maine LLC versus City of Santa Ana. Uh, again, I work at the law firm, Retan and Tucker, and prior to me, uh, becoming a council member, the firm had been uh, retained by the developer and the city, uh, in that litigation matter, so I was not participating in that matter whatsoever.
Great, thank you for that clarification, let me bring it back to the, uh, City Manager for her closing comments.
Um, certainly, sir, just two items tonight, um, emergency rental assistance was made available, uh, as part of the twenty-twenty-one Consolidated Appropriation Act, and as such, uh, staff did review the parameters, and I just wanted to report to you that we have applied for a direct allocation of ten million dollars for those funds, keeping our fingers crossed that we will receive them, and last item is, uh, communities across the nation are honoring those that have lost, lost their lives to COVID by using lighting on various hallmarks, and this was brought to my attention by a couple colleagues that sit on City Council, so you will notice if you drive by or take a look over at the water tower, it is lit up, and we too are honoring those victims of COVID-nineteen.
Excellent comments, both of them, thank you, Madam City Manager, let me go ahead and, uh, bring it back for Councilmember comments, and let me start with, uh, Councilmember Becerra.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I, I wanted to begin my comments this evening, uh, with a pitch for downloading and using the My Santa Ana app. Um, I would like to, uh, ask staff to, you know, really, you know, promote this wonderful tool, I, I mean, it's just something that, um, i- is very helpful, and, you know, it always amazes me for as much as I know I, I boast about it, and I know my colleagues do as well, but I think we could really do a better job of trying to promote it, whether it's on our city's social media platforms, or on the freeway adjacent digital, uh, billboards. Uh, it's just something that we really need to get out there, I've, I've got a couple of requests this week from folks, uh, on some real significant public works issues, and I would ask them if they knew about the My Santa Ana app, and I was always shocked and disappointed that they didn't, so I would just ask that we try to do more on that. Um, on January eighth, uh, on behalf of the city, I attended the UCLA Land Use Conference, and I know that sounds strange for me to attend anything UCLA-related, but it actually is a great annual event, it provides attendees with a, a good update on, uh, the, the land use litigation and, uh, legislation that has come through, that is really helpful for not just planners, but uh, folks on the council to understand, and what I'll do is I'll have, um, the, the materials that I received, I'll have those, uh, distributed to all my colleagues. Um, and also, um, as our city's rep to SCAG, the Southern California Association of Governments, I had the opportunity to cast a vote at our Regional Council meeting on January seventh in support of the Regional Council's resolution affirming the climate change crisis here in Southern California. Um, obviously, it's stating the obvious, we know that climate change is real, and that it is, it is a very important issue for us to address, but, uh, what that, uh, resolution does for us is it allows us opportunities coming down the pipeline to be provided technical assistance and additional support for when, uh, San Ana takes on more uh, climate action-related initiatives. And speaking of SCAG, last Friday, the SCAG Rena Appeals Board voted to deny the appeals uh, to our regional housing allocation that were filed by four other Orange County cities. Now, those cities attempted to dump their obligation, their housing obligations, onto San Ana, and unfortunately, the SCAG Rena Appeals Board denied their attempts. I, I wanted to thank our City Manager, uh, Mintai, and Melanie McCann for their outstanding work in defending our city from those appeals, they did a fantastic job, I sat in on the um, meeting, and I know, uh, Mayor Sarmiento did as well, and I just wanted to, uh, applaud them. You know, San Ana doesn't need, you know, regional allocations to continue to do what we've always done, we are one of the densest cities, second in California, fourth in the nation, and we're gonna continue to do our work, as we did tonight, as we approved housing that, that helps address the crisis, but I know that many of my colleagues agree that we're not gonna stand by and let other cities, um, skirt their obligations and dump it onto our backs, so I'm really happy about what happened there. Um, and, and just to kind of reiterate some of the numbers, you know, San Ana has built one thousand one hundred percent times, or eleven times, really, uh, more affordable housing units than what was asked of us. And, and just to show you what two other cities, uh, who appealed our numbers have been doing in the same cycle, Garden Grove has only built twenty-one percent of their lower-income housing allocation requirement, and Irvine has only built twenty-four percent. So while we're at eleven hundred percent, eleven times, they're barely in the low twenties in their, um, fulfilling of their responsibilities. And speaking of Irvine, you know, I gotta tell you, when I was on the, uh, SCAG Appeal Hearing just recently, I saw Bill Urquhart, and I was really excited to see Bill Urquhart, now, for those that don't know Bill, Bill's a member of the San Ana Chamber, he's a board member, and I thought to myself, well, this is great, you know, Mayor Sarmiento's on the phone, I see staff, and here's Bill Urquhart, he must be monitoring for the chamber. Well, unfortunately, that was not what was happening. So here, here's this gentleman who lives here in San Ana, who is a member of our board, of the San Ana Chamber, and he was there at the hearing to represent the city of Irvine in their attempt to dump their city's portions of their regional housing allocation onto San Ana. I, I could not believe, I, I just couldn't believe that a member of the board of the San Ana Chamber of Commerce and a resident of our city would so blatantly work against our city's interests. You know, Mr. Urquhart works for a large law firm, and he could have handed that work off to another attorney, but he chose not to. I raised this issue because I hope that the San Ana Chamber will not turn a blind eye to Mr. Urquhart's actions, and I hope that they will take the appropriate actions in regards to his actions that Friday. I, I just don't believe that, uh, our chamber, uh, would really condone board members, not just members, board members, uh, going against the chamber's mission, which is to broker community solutions that create economic growth for San Ana. What Mr. Urquhart did that day for Irvine was not doing that and not living up to the chamber. Um, in conclusion, I wanted to express my condolences, uh, to the friends and family of the, the four people that we are adjourning tonight's meeting in memory of, and with that, that's the conclusion of my comments, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember, did you wanna read the, the bios on, 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 I think, on, on Mr. Serrato and, on Pat Henderson, or Hen- uh, Hernandez, I'm sorry?
Sure, I'd be happy to, um, uh, so, you know, um, in, in regards to Al Serrato, Al, Al's a former council member here in San Ana, he actually is a predecessor of mine in Ward Four, uh, he served from nineteen seventy-nine to nineteen eighty-three. He also sat on the, uh, board of the, uh, Bowers Museum for many years, worked as a museum consultant and traveled throughout Asia, uh, helping to secure, uh, exhibitions. Um, during his time here in San Ana, he would have been here when, um, former City Manager Dave Ring was cutting his teeth in the, um, redevelopment agency here in the city. Um, so he would have seen some of the Renaissance that started to grow by the time, uh, City Manager became, uh, City Manager. Uh, another aspect that I wanted to point out with, uh, former Councilmember Serrato is that he was very involved in our, um, our military and veterans community. He, he was a decorated officer, but he was also, uh, selected as a national commander of the highly prestigious Combat Infantry Association, and he was also finance officer of the American Legion in San Ana, which is where actually I met Councilmember Serrato, so while I might have made reference to Abbott and Costello, I'm definitely not old enough to have known Mr. Serrato back when he served on the council. Um, and then, uh, with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll also, as you suggested, I'll read the, um, the bio for, uh, Mr. Pat Hernandez. So, so Pat, uh, grew up here in San Ana, was born and raised here in town, he went to Saint Joseph's and Modern Day High School and San Ana College. Uh, Pat played football at Modern Day and SAC, and, uh, he's a son, father, husband, and a grandfather, and him and his brother, uh, established Civic Center Lock and Save back in nineteen seventy-one. It was him and brother Carl that started the business in his dad's, uh, auto garage over on Civic Center and Flower. Uh, many of their customers were lawyers, jurors, uh, San Ana's police officers, uh, our city employees, county workers, all went through that shop over the last, uh, fifty years, and Pat did a fantastic job in keeping up with the technology in regards to his trade, and, uh, Pat is survived by, uh, his wife and, uh, kids, and you know, he just, he was a great man, and I, I wanted to thank former Councilmember Brett Franklin for, uh, informing me of Pat's passing, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for allowing me to read, um, those bios.
No, thank you for doing that, um, appreciate it, uh, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um, yes, I, I wanted to also adjourn in honor of, uh, Miriam Lopez. Uh, she was a community organizer here in the city of Santa Ana. Um, she was known as a fierce community advocate who, over the past ten years, was organizing in this community to transform the conditions for youth. Um, she was connected through the San Ana community, which is part of many different spaces such as Kid Works, um, San Ana Active Streets, um, Orange County Dream Team, Orange County Immigrant Youth United, San Ana Building Healthies Community, um, um, Building Healthy Communities, Jovenes, Cultivando Cambio, El Centro Cultural de México, Noche de Altares, Corrazón de Mariposas, YPOC, San Ana Public Library, Teen Space, In La Cash Fund, and any, any other spaces. Um, she passed away, um, a couple of days ago, and I, I just wanted to pay my respects to her family and, um, thank her for the, the service that she provided here to the people of San Ana.
Thank you, Councilmember, uh, Councilmember Lopez.
Um, thank you, Mayor Sarmiento, um, and I just wanna thank my colleague, Councilmember Becerra, for reminding me about the Rena appeals that just took place. Um, I read the appeal from the city of Garden Grove and Newporting or Belinda, and, um, the City Manager, I, I have a question for you. Um, is San Ana submitted their own appeal in return, correct?
Um, no, Councilmember, we did not submit an appeal, uh, we were merely provided the opportunity to comment on the other four cities' appeals because they specifically named our city.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, um, and in the process of, of any of, of, of that, that the entire process, did we accept more affordable housing units?
I'm not sure what you mean by accept more affordable housing units, in our response in our letter to SCAG, we did indicate that we would take on more, um, but the staff cho- chose not to incorporate that in their deliberations.
Okay, thank you, thank you, that was, that was all, I just needed clarification on that.
Great, thank you for those comments, uh, Councilmember Mendoza.
No, I don't have any comments, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember, um, Councilmember Fan.
Um, sorry, it's been a lot of comments for today, and I, you know, I really appreciate staff's work on everything, I think that there's there's a lot going on, and I am really looking forward to tomorrow morning and, uh, welcoming a new start, a fresh start to our country, to all of us celebrating the first, uh, woman vice president, she's black, she's Asian, specifically South Asian, um, and really to a new leader who will lead our country with compassion, with science, with thoughtfulness, and with consideration. So, I really hope that no matter who you supported in the presidential race, in light of everything going on, in light of the pandemic, that we all, you know, stand together, talk about our issues, but also agree that we need to come together to deal with the COVID crisis, and to really get our country back on track, and to really fix the things and work toward the promises uh, of our founding fathers. So with that, uh, thank you, everyone, and I will see you at the Housing Authority.
Thank you, Councilmember, um, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, um, uh, make an announcement in regards to the Transportation Corridor Agency and remind our, our, the public that the city of San Ana does sit on the Board of Directors for the Transportation Corridor Agency, and this last past week, that we celebrated the grand opening of the Oso Parkway Bridge, which offers six lanes of travel through in each direction and provides a direct connection between the two forty-one toll roads and Los Patronas Parkway. Uh, the project, uh, the new, the new improvements offer mobility and connectivity in South Orange County, diverting traffic from congested surface to streets, and providing improved access to businesses and restaurants in those areas. Um, but it was a huge virtual grand opening, uh, I know that, that, um, people might think, oh, you know, what does that have to do with San Ana, but over, close to a hundred thousand, um, toll road transponder subscribers live in, in the city of San Ana. Uh, so it's, it's a huge number of our residents that do have access to those roads and use them, uh, frequently to get to and from work, so just wanted to make that short announcement. And, um, in regards to, uh, the, I wanted to touch a little bit on what my colleague, Councilmember Becerra, said in regards to the, to the SCAG Rena Appeal, and unfortunately, how there was a, a board member of the San Ana Chamber of Commerce uh, advocating against us, uh, that was very, you know, upsetting and disappointing to see, because we, we wanna think of the San Ana Chamber of Commerce as, as a, as a entity that advocates for, for, you know, for our city and for economic development in our city, and to have one of the board members try to work against the city, and the city where he lives was very, uh, unfortunate and disappointing, to say the least. So I wanna make sure that the San Ana Chamber of Commerce knows that we're not happy about it, because that is one of the board members, and, you know, he should be held accountable. With that said, I, uh, Madam City Manager, I wanna see that within the next month, maybe, we, we could, if we could gather information on what, uh, contractual litigation we have with the law firm that, that, um, this person works at, that was, you know, um, advocating against us at the SCAG Rena Hearing, um, I wanna look into that, see, and, and get a report of what different litigations we have pending, and what kind of work we, we contract out to that law firm, um, when that's possible, Madam City Manager. Um, i- i- is that, um, is that something that you could bring forward to us, uh, via email or a memo in, in the next couple of weeks? Or Madam City Attorney, actually?
I was just going to say, Councilmember, that, um, uh, under the umbrella of your city attorney, she would have a listing of all of the
I, yes.
Services.
Thank you for that.
I'd be happy to get the city count, distribute a list to the entire city council.
Yeah, that, that would be good to know, um, as we move forward with this, and, um, also, that, that is up for that, uh, area, I also wanted to, to add to the unfortunately long list of of, uh, people that we want to adjourn this meeting in, uh, in, uh, in memory of. Um, you know, and it's, uh, Mr. Carlos Contreras, uh, Spanish teacher at Saddleback High School, uh, which is not only in the ward I represent, but my, uh, alma mater, you know, I graduated from Saddleback High School in two thousand and six, and it, it was, it's a huge loss for our community. Uh, Roadrunner Nation mourns the loss of a beloved colleague, teacher, friend, mentor, musician, role model, and inspiration to all who knew him. Uh, Mr. Juan, Juan Carlos Contreras was a beloved member of our, the Saddleback family since the year two thousand, and he was more than an amazing Spanish teacher to his students, his passion for music and performing and teaching guitar and music to students was what made anyone who knew him see what a unique and beautiful soul he had, whether he was playing and singing for his students during class at our assemblies, back-to-school nights, open houses, or staff meetings, Mr. Contreras' voice and energy, uh, reverberated to all of that were lucky enough to hear him. Mr. Contreras, uh, the Saddleback family will miss you, and we send our deep condolences to his family. I, uh, as a graduate of Saddleback High School, I, I never had Mr. Contreras as a teacher, but for anyone who went to high school with me- but for anyone who went to high school with me and knew me, I was never where I was supposed to be, uh, in high school. And I was frequently in Mr. Contreras' classroom, uh, in between periods while I went to the restroom, uh, during, during classes where I was supposed to be. I was always going in there to visit friends. And he was always so welcoming and inspiring to me and to anyone that would walk to his, through his classroom. Uh, so I wanted to add him to the list and close in his memory. He lost, um, his life last week uh, to COVID unfortunately, uh, like many in our community. And it's a huge loss for, for our city and our school district and, and Saddleback High School. Um, and, and now on a, on a bright, on a little brighter note, I just want to wish, um, our Executive Director of Library, Brian Sternberg, a happy birthday, uh, which I believe is tomorrow. And Daniel Soto in our City Manager's Office, who also has a birthday next week, uh, very happy birthday to him. Uh, two great assets to our, to our San Ana community and, um, happy to celebrate them in the next coming days. So with that, Mr. Mayor, those are my comments. And, uh, thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Great. Thank you for those comments. Um, so just real briefly, I want to just, um, thank everybody who spoke, thank the staff for all the hard work and especially for their good work over at SCAG during the appeal. Um, I heard the, uh, arguments, um, you know, to the extent that, um, we all can, you know, debate the idea of housing needs and, you know, what categories we should be building. Uh, we're the ones who should be deciding for our city, not others. And so, um, that was, I think, um, a really well, uh, they were well-placed arguments. Um, you know, uh, City Manager, you did a very good job in presenting our position and I did speak with the Director in advance and so, um, you know, I think he also was, was pulling for us as well, obviously, because his methodology was being challenged from what I understand. But, um, uh, the other uh, issue I wanted to just raise before I make a few comments on, um, uh, Miriam Lopez, whose, uh, memory we're adjourning in, um, was, you know, I attended the, uh, Martin Luther King Breakfast, uh, yesterday and, um, uh, our Police Chief, uh, David Valentine spoke and he did a very good job, uh, representing the city and talking about issues that were important. Uh, you know, talking about inclusivity, talking about, you know, accountability, talking about how important it is for, um, there to be respect in the community, especially in memory of, um, of MLK Day. So, um, you saw that he put out, um, another notice talking about tomorrow because I received a lot of emails, maybe you have as well, um, about people just feeling unsettled and kind of traumatized by what they saw last week, what could happen here. We're the county seat. We host the federal, state, um, you know, county office buildings and we are a target often. And because we are also a very outspoken council, uh, you know, we have neighbors to the south of us and really neighbors all around us that may not feel real, real happy about some of the positions we take. So I think what, um, his comments that he made and his message that he put out there, I think settled a lot of feelings and I appreciate him for being much more outspoken, much more, um, uh, uh, making an effort to connect with our community. So thank you for doing that, Chief. I think that's important when people hear that reassurance coming from all of us and you. Um, that really does set a calm in our community. So that was, um, that was very important. I received a lot of good comments about that. I think people really appreciate that connection. Um, you know, finally, um, I, I just want to say, you know, look, we're having way, way too many people passing away, right? And we're having to adjourn and, and, you know, before we would adjourn in a person's memory and it'd be two or three months later that we'd adjourn in somebody else's. Now we seem to be adjourning almost every meeting on multiple people's, um, you know, multiple people's, uh, memory. So let me just say a little bit more about, um, Ms. Miriam Lopez because, um, you know, she has a real tragic story, I think. A tragic and a, you know, and a, and a story we can celebrate because she was so young. Uh, she was 24 years old, but in those 24 years she lived, uh, you know, multiple lifetimes and you know, Miriam was born on May 17th and 19, six, and, and, uh, on May 17th, 1996 in Mexico City. Uh, she came to the US when she was eight years old, um, in August of 2004 and she grew up here in San Ana, went to, uh, Fremont Elementary, Mendez Intermediate, uh, uh, Seagerstrom High School. And in 2019, she received her bachelor's in public administration from Cal State Fullerton. And I think you heard, uh, Councilmember Hernandez speak about all of her activity, uh, in the city and it, you know, the list just goes on and on, but I, what I did want to at least, uh, recite is some words that her parents, uh, wrote. And they wrote this in Spanish and I, if, if you'll all indulge me, I just want to, uh, put this into the record and make sure that we, uh, recognize this and, in her memory. Uh, this is from her parents. This is something Miriam wrote on her university graduation cap. And she goes on, nunca pensamos que, que te fuéramos a ver, olar tan pronto, hija mía. Tú construiste un propio vuelo, nosotros nada más te ayudamos a crecer tus alas. Siempre estarás en nuestros corazones y vamos a recordar todos los bellos momentos que tuvistes y nos distes. Te damos gracias por todo el amor y cariño que nos distes. Que Dios te bendiga, hija mía. Yo sé que vas a estar con nuestro, con nosotros para siempre. Que Dios te bendiga, hija mía. And tho- those were precious words from, uh, parents that, uh, lost their daughter, uh, that had such a, you know, such a, um, you know, bright future ahead of her and somebody who was raised here in San Ana and did so much for our community. So uh, let's adjourn in her memory as well as in, um, uh, former City Manager Dave Ream's memory, Mr. Al Serrato, former Councilmember and Pat Hernandez and, uh, Carlos Contreras as well. So, uh, colleagues, I just want to remind you that we have to sign off. Uh, is that correct, Madam Clerk? The only question I had, how do we sign back on? Is it on the same Zoom link?
Nope, that is correct. It's the same exact Zoom that you use. We just need to stop this meeting and then just give us one minute and then, uh, we'll start it up again. It's the exact same link that you have in your calendar for the City Council meeting. For members of the public who want to participate as well or want to continue, um, to listen, they also use the same exact, uh, Zoom link.
Perfect. Okay. Uh, so we'll go ahead and, uh, adjourn and log off and then we'll log right back on.